The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Morning to everyone. This is the fifth day of Public Hearing 20 dealing with the prevention and responses to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation in disability services through two case studies involving Life Without Barriers. We begin today's hearing with the acknowledgement of country. We acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner McEwan and I are participating in the hearing. We also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galbulay is participating in the hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people attending the hearing and those who may be following the hearing on the live screen. Yes, Ms Baker.
Your honour, Chair, the first witness today is Mr Stephen Dolly.
Yes, Mr Dolly, thank you for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. You may already realise, but I'll point out that Commissioner Galbulay is joining the hearing from Melbourne and she appears on the screen. Commissioner McEwan is in the same room, the Sydney hearing room as I am, and you can see Commissioner McEwan here. And Ms Baker, of course, is also in the Sydney hearing room. And shortly I'll ask Ms Baker to ask you some questions. But in the meantime, if you would follow the instructions of my associate, he will administer the oath to you.
I will read you the oath at the end. Please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr Dolly. Ms Baker will now ask you some questions.
Could you please state your full name?
Stephen Dolly.
And Mr Dolly, you've provided two statements to the Royal Commission?
Yes.
And the first statement is one dated the 17th of November 2021?
Yes.
And that is found for the benefit of the parties at hearing bundle C, tab 1. There is also a supplementary statement dated 8 December 2021?
Yes.
And that supplementary statement is found at bundle C, tab 1A. The supplementary statement contains a number of corrections to the original statement. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And taking into account the corrections made in the second statement, is the first statement true and correct?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you, begin by asking you some questions about your current position. You tell us in your statement at paragraph 1 that you're the Director of Policy Reform and Business Development for Life Without Barriers. So that's nationwide?
Yes.
And you say that you've held that position since October of this year?
That's correct.
What does that role involve?
So it's a newly formed role within the organisation that looks after what we would classify as disability, mental health and aged care policy. It looks after programmes, in terms of changes to programmes set out by, such as the NDIS. And then looking at clients in terms of coming into the organisation and, you know, in terms of business development work.
And prior to holding that position, you tell us that you were the Director of Disability and Age Care, New South Wales and ACT of Life Without Barriers?
Yes, that's correct.
So the position that you hold now, that's a national position?
Yes.
Whereas the position that you previously held was state-based?
And New South Wales ACT.
And what dates did you hold that position from until?
From February 2019?
Yes.
Until I took on my new role in October.
In October. So just to be clear, in paragraph 4 of your statement, where you say that you've held the role of State Director since December of 2019, that's not correct?
Sorry, paragraph where?
Paragraph 4 of your statement?
My statement might be different. Paragraph 1 says February 2019, paragraph 4 says December 2018. That's what Ms Baker was asking.
Oh, okay. Yes, then that's, sorry, I'm sorry.
And that position as State Director for New South Wales and the ACT, what did that position involve?
So I was responsible for disability, aged care, mental health services across New South Wales and ACT. And ran, and held a leadership team that ran the services for those services across that region.
Okay, so each one of those areas, not just disability, but also
Yes.
the other areas that you've mentioned?
Within that, sorry, within that jurisdiction.
Within that jurisdiction, namely New South Wales and ACT.
That's right.
And before February of 2019, you didn't work for Life Without Barriers in any capacity?
No.
Your statement addresses the events that occurred in the Lismore houses?
That's correct.
And you understand that many of those events occurred before February 2019?
That's correct.
And that was, you've said, before you commenced employment with Life Without Barriers? And you understand that if you're unable to answer a question, you understand that it, because it relates to a period of time before you came on board, you understand that that question will be then asked of senior council, of Ms Robbs tomorrow?
Yes.
And other issues that you give evidence about today may also be followed up with Ms Robbs tomorrow?
Yes.
In any event, you've read the documents and read the statements in, that have been produced to this Royal Commission?
Yes.
You've read those carefully?
Yes.
And have you also heard the evidence that's been adduced in this commission?
Yes, I have.
All of it?
Yes.
After reading those statements and the documents and hearing the evidence, have you assessed the adequacy of the support and care that was provided by Life Without Barriers to the residents of the Lismore houses, in particular Sophie and Natalie?
Yes, I've made some assumptions, yes.
And have you identified any shortcomings or deficiencies in the care and support that was provided to Sophie, Natalie and the other residents?
Yes, I have.
Could you tell us what those are?
All, all of them?
Yes.
So, starting with, starting with Sophie, there are a number of things within, from my review of the information, there is a number of things within that particular case that I think needed to be done better. That is, one is the kind of compatibility, which, you know, is set out, I think, in a few cases in terms of the make-up of the home. There was the investigation that took place prior to an incident, which resulted in a non-substantiation of allegation that Sophie was pushed. And I believe that is incorrect. There's certainly some complexities that play out in the case in terms of Sophie being exploring her sexuality, intimacy and relationships. And I can see through my review staff taking that seriously, trying to ensure that they provide adequate support and education. However, there are some areas in that, such as Sophie allowing to have a boyfriend over at the house, which I think is something that needs to have certainly been addressed and allowed. In terms of Natalie, there's certainly some, some information between 2012 and 2014 that was disclosed to staff, in which they should have acted on immediately. And then once some more information in 2015 was disclosed in terms of some allegations, I can see a process followed through which resulted in, you know, court proceedings and sexual misconduct. And so it's my view that certainly in the 2014, 2015, sorry, 2012, 2014 period, that those allegations that were made to those staff should have and absolutely should have been acted on immediately. And there's some, some information there around Natalie's finances and some receipts and some communication with the family regarding that. And so it would be my expectation that those receipts were provided and reassurance made to the family within that matter. There's certainly some information regarding the use of bowel management charts not being followed up and nor being provided to the family on request. And it would be my expectation through the review of the information that those would certainly be kept up to date, accurate, provided, monitored and again reassurance with the family. A couple of other things, if I may, is I can see attempts within the case to look at the service provisions provided within the home in terms of adequacy of staff and resources. And it's my view that there are some issues that are lacking in terms of funding support within the, within the group home, in which I can see through some of my review that between LWB and the day program provider and the family, certainly having conversations regarding Sophie and the adequacy of support within there, potentially particularly resulting in inadequate funding. And so I think that that is a particular issue.
What period are you talking about, just as adequacy of funding this?
Well, I think it plays out post the NDIS, particularly the implementation. And I think from memory, sorry Commissioner, that's from 2018 onwards. Particularly in where you review some of the, the funding nature that was provided in terms of dollars which required hours of support. I think from 2018 to 2021 doubled as well. So I think there's, there's something there that certainly plays out as an issue.
In relation to that issue, is that, is that a deficiency or shortcoming that you identify that Life Without Barriers takes responsibility for or just an issue in the case study as a whole?
No, in the case study as a whole.
Okay, up until this point, the deficiencies and shortcomings that you've spoken about, are they deficiencies and shortcomings of Life Without Barriers?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, please continue.
I think in terms of communication with families, that from my review and the material, I can certainly see large amounts of attempts to communicate with family. Listening to the statements, reading the statements and listening to the evidence presented here, the family's expectation was clearly that communication should have been better. And if that's the case, then certainly my expectation is that we should have done better in communicating with families, particularly around things that were happening for their loved ones in the home in general, but also particularly around critical incidents that took place within the home as well. In that, particularly with families, we should have been able to communicate much better, much more reasonably and much more concise and timely. Sorry, I'm trying to remember. I think comes through the material in some of the statements from family and particularly some recommendations that are at the end of some of their statements regarding training. I can, I can certainly see within the documentation, a significant amount of training being provided to to staff and particularly in the provisions of behaviour support planning and management. However, again, I, from reading the material and hearing from the family, you know, there's certainly some work there, I think, in LWB's ongoing nature to do. The other one, I will say, I think maybe the last one, I'm sorry, is in terms of incident management records. There are a couple of occasions where particular incidents weren't logged into a incident management system, which then flagged, which then therefore didn't flag in terms of its criticality to certain parts of the organisation.
Thank you, Mr Dolly. The deficiencies that you and shortcomings that you've told us about now, is there any reason why you didn't identify those in your statement to the commission?
Sorry?
Is there any reason why you didn't identify those deficiencies and shortcomings in your statement to the, to the commission?
I think in some elements of my statement, I certainly, certainly have towards some of that. I think probably more appropriate that following reviewing of the information and particularly hearing the statements and the verbal statements of family and other, other members over the past week, I've been able to make some assumptions and classifications of areas where we needed to improve better. Yes.
And in relation to those areas of improvement, have you performed any assessment as to the reasons for these shortcomings and deficiencies? Whether there were failures of policy, failures of training, other kinds of failures of support that could have been avoided?
Yes, certainly. Within the context of listening to evidence and reviewing information, we certainly have looked at some of those things and made some assumptions, yes.
And are you able to tell us about any of those changes that you have identified need to be made?
I think one particular one for me that has certainly played out through listening to statements and listening to family and particularly Sophie herself, and my thought was quite powerful in, in that was the need for within our, within the group home model to cater for allowing people to explore their intimacy relationships and sexuality. And I think from, from, you know, particularly listening to Sophie's father in terms of, you know, kind of the complexities around dignity of risk and informed choices and ensuring that people are safe, but allowing them to explore. And so it's, it's very much my view that we need to be listening to people with a disability and led by people with a disability in how that should play out for them and how we should provide adequate support and service in a, in a model context of a group home to allow them to explore their sexuality and relationships. So, you know, certainly within that case, I know that there's some work underway already in forming in almost a governance group led by people with disability, for people with disability to explore the complexities that are around that and then how we provide the service provision for them within the context of exploring their sexuality and intimacy and relationships.
How long has that work been underway for?
That's something that we would have only just started.
As a result of the commission hearings?
From the review of some of the information, yes.
Okay, so after you, after you prepared your statement then?
Yes.
Thank you for, for that. I'd like to just ask you some questions generally about policies first at a high level before moving on to some exploration of the particular issues that you've discussed and which are in your statement. Firstly, in relation to Life Without Barriers policies, in your statement, you outline a number of policies, both current and historical. And at paragraph 10 of your statement, you tell us that the identification of policies has been made more difficult because various of the Life Without Barriers policies don't contain a date on the face of the document, such that it's not possible to reliably identify the time period during which those policies were operational. The first question is, when, when there are shortcomings and deficiencies, like the ones that you've indicated to us now, do you agree that it is essential that one can clearly identify which policy was in operation at the time so that we can tell whether the deficiency was one of policy, training or just a broke employee or an unavoidable accident? Do you agree with that proposition?
That, sorry, that policies should have?
Policies should be dated?
Ah, yes.
Yes. And
By which you mean each successive version of a policy?
Yes, sorry, yes. Every time a policy is amended or updated, it should have a date stamp.
Okay, and that's, that's something that hasn't been happening to date, as far as you can tell, or not regularly happening as far as you could tell?
I'm, I'm not sure in terms of how policy implementation was done back, back when I, you know, reviewing previous informations on the
In terms of amendments and changes to policy from this point in time onwards, can you assure the commission that from this point in time onwards, all changes to the policies, all version changes will be dated?
Yes, my expectation that that's the case, yes.
And then in particular in relation to the policies which you've identified as being NDIS policies, those are more recent policies that have been created to comply with the NDIS standards, is that right?
Yes, particularly when the NDIS rolls out per jurisdiction.
Yes.
So there would be state-based legislation that some of those policies would be inhering to.
Yes.
And as the rollout occurred across the country, it'd be my understanding that the policy implementation of that subsequently changed over that period of time.
Okay, so where in your statement you say words to the effect of following the introduction of the NDIS, the following policy applied, can we take it that that policy applied as and from the 1st of July 2018 in New South Wales? Or is that a fuzzy date as well?
No, I don't think it's a fuzzy date. I think there is a transitional period in which that occurred. So from my understanding, yes, those policies apply post the 2018 period that I referred to in my statement for New South Wales.
So we can be confident that as of the 1st of July in New South Wales, any policy that's entitled NDIS LWB Policy on X, that that policy was operational at least from the 1st of July 2018?
Yes, obviously, yeah. Sorry, in order that I can comment on the fact that I wasn't in the organisation at that point in time?
To the best of your understanding, that's how, how it was operational? Then finally, in terms of access to policies, you speak about that at paragraph 391 of your statement. In particular, you tell us that from May 2011, Life Without Barriers centralised all policy documents on a SharePoint library known as the Policy Centre. And that staff could search for policies and supporting documentation relevant to a number of services on that common SharePoint library, is that right?
Yes.
You then tell us in paragraph 392 that that has now been moved on to Office 365 so that staff and managers can access the Policy Centre from mobile devices?
Yes.
Phones, iPads?
Yeah, electronic devices, yes.
Currently, is it just Life Without Barriers staff that have access to that Policy Centre? What about agency staff? Do they have access to it?
I don't believe so.
Do you agree that agency staff should have access to it?
Yes, sorry, I, I'm not, I'm not sure in terms of whether the access of agency staff to the Policy Centre. But yes, in terms of the operational policies within the, the home in which they would be working for, yes.
So they should, they should have access to the policies, but you're not able to tell us, sitting here today, whether they do have access to the policies?
No, I'm, I'm
Is that something that in your capacity as the policy director, you undertake to look into and make sure that agency staff do have access to those policies in the future?
Well, yes, yes.
If you don't know, who would know?
There would be, given my role as the, the Director of Policies, quite new and a lot of that time has been in preparation for the Royal Commission. In terms of within the organisation, there would be a number of people, such as Executive Director, Callum Safeguarding. They would certainly have that knowledge. There would be a number of people within that stream of the organisation who particularly like a disability staff service consultancy team that develops policy, they would have the answers to that. So I can certainly find that out.
And perhaps Ms Robbs could give evidence about that tomorrow?
Possible.
Was the position you now occupy created for a particular reason?
It's a, it's a new position.
I understand that, that's why I asked.
Yes, I think it's, it's a position to create, you see the policy programmes kind of portfolio, bringing that together, given that as changes happen within the NDIS, they often result in programme changes, particularly at an operational level. And so bringing that kind of key work together so that we can pull that together in terms of policy change, what that actually means for our programme in terms of regulatory behaviour and then implementing that out into the business. So I think there was an intention for that.
And Mr Dolly, do you know whether families or residents have access to the Policy Centre?
Don't believe so.
Would you agree that in order to effectively advocate for residents, both themselves, advocate for themselves and family members and other advocates to advocate effectively on behalf of them, they need to have an understanding of what the policies are?
Yes, I was certainly aware that there are occasions, you know, and requests can be made to access policy. And I'm certainly aware that has been the case, but yet to your point, yes, they can have access to it.
Do you agree that they should have access
Yes.
to all of the policies without needing to ask for a specific policy because they might not be aware of whether a policy exists or not?
Yes.
And is that?
Mr Dolly, I could actually ask you a question. Can you help me understand your role a bit more? So you don't have direct knowledge of what happens day to day in a group home, so related to what happens when a staff member arrives and the act of they had to policy, whether they're agency staff or not, you don't have direct knowledge of what happens day to day?
In my current?
In your, in your current role?
No, 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 I don't perform those duties or have oversight over that, not my current role, no.
Okay. And how about in your previous role as State Director? In your previous role, did you ever go and visit particular homes?
I, I started my career as a disability support worker, so
But not within Life Without Barriers?
No, not, not within Life Without Barriers, no.
So as an employee of Life Without Barriers, have you physically gone into the group homes and was that mainly when you were the State Director?
Yes, that's the, the only other job I've had in Life Without Barriers.
So it's, it's not something that you do as Director of Policy?
The Director of Policy, as I said, is a very new role
Yes.
within the organisation. And in terms of the time that I've spent in that role, it's been quite limited, given
I see.
the requirements around, you know, documentation, preparing statements. So yes, it would absolutely be a role in which I would be going into, particularly looking about from a policy perspective, how does policy translate to implementation? Yes, that would be something that I would be doing and a team of people that sit under me would be doing.
Why were you given responsibility for, apparently for providing a detailed statement to the Royal Commission?
I believe because of my role as the New South Wales ACT Director and my understanding of a group home and how it operates. I believe it's, it's why I was given that responsibility. I also don't believe that there is somebody or anybody within the business that can speak for that entire relevant period of time at this stage.
Do you mean from 2011 to 2021?
Yes. But for the
Is there anybody who would have detailed knowledge of group homes in New South Wales from a date earlier than 2018?
Possibly, yes.
That's when a lot of these events occurred?
Yes.
So just to be clear, in relation to access of residents and their families to the policies, either via the Policy Centre or via some other means, to your knowledge, at present, they don't have that access, but you agree that they should have that access?
Yeah, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
And I don't think they do. And I agree that, yes, they do. And I can check if that's
And is that something that you'll also be looking at following up after this commission?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to now turn to some specific questions, beginning with the Um, okay, I'd like to now turn to some specific questions, beginning with the Gennella Bar House. Um. You say at paragraph thirteen of your statement that Life Without Barriers men- managed the Gennella Bar House from October of two thousand and eleven.
Yes.
Um, and the department um was, so that, that was um the Department of um Human Services, Aging, Disability and Home Care. Um, that was the owner of the, the property at that time. Um, and you tell us that as it was originally established, it was Emergency Response Transition Unit Accommodation or URTU, is that right? Is that a department classification or a Life Without Barriers classification?
I believe it's a department classification.
And I, is it the case that that was designed to be a rapid response, intense assessment, and a review with then a transition to a more long-term accommodation?
Yes.
And um to your knowledge, did any of the residents in the Gennella Bar House ever transition to more long-term alternative accommodation?
Uh, to my review of the information, I can see that there were a number of attempts um in terms of transitions. Uh, however, for various reasons, those transitions didn't eventuate. Um, and so, uh, no, um, but, but to the point that, yes, there were uh, uh, and a case particularly that I can think of where the transition arrangement was underway, but it just didn't, it didn't work.
Okay, so attempts were made, but it never happened?
From my review of the information, yes.
Um, at some stage, it appears that the Gennella Bar House ceased being emergency accommodation and became disability-supported accommodation. Do you know when Gennella Bar ceased being emergency accommodation?
No, I don't.
Um, do you have any knowledge around the funding of emergency accommodation as compared to disability-supported accommodation? Is it the case that disability-supported accommodation receives significantly less funds from the department than emergency accommodation?
It's my understanding that uh uh Aging, Disability and Home Care
Yeah.
uh established the requirements around the funding for an individual. So I, I can see within the, the information that um, particularly when Sophie transitioned in, um, there was, you know, an assessment kind of component done. Um, and I think relevant attached funding to that based on the assessment done by the New South Wales State Government, Aging, Disability and Home Care. Um, so I, i- it's my assumption that a, a very similar process takes place when, uh, or if that changes to a different classification. Um, and that is funded through the state government at this time.
Okay, so you're, you, when you, when you say this is an assumption, you don't have any knowledge about whether or not the funding for Gennella Bar was reduced as a result of the change in classification?
No, no.
Um, perhaps that's something we can also ask of Ms Robbs tomorrow. Is it the case that Gennella Bar was the first disability group home that Life Without Barriers had managed in the Far North Coast subregion? Do you have any knowledge about that?
I believe it was.
Um, and the Regional Operations Manager of the Far North Coast, um at that point in time, is it the case that he had no experience in managing group homes? Do you have any knowledge about?
I can't comment on his relevant experience, sorry.
Again, we might take that with Ms Robbs tomorrow.
Have you visited the, that home?
No, I have not.
Never?
Uh, the Gennella Bar ho- house would have been before your time, Mr Dolly. How about the, the Lismore House?
No, I have not visited the Lismore House.
Okay, so when you were State Director of the group homes, I think you say there was a hundred and thirty-eight?
Yes.
Um, under your supervision, how many of them did you physically visit?
Uh, I tried to visit regularly on a, on a monthly basis. Um, I never visited the Lismore Houses, I've said.
Okay.
Um, and uh for a period of about two years of that, um, was obviously hampered by COVID in terms of its uh ability for me to go in and, and, and go into homes. So, um, you know, regularly up until that point, but no, I did not.
I think the question was, how many?
Uh, to the, to the point of the number, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure I can give you a number.
When you say you visited monthly, do you mean you attempted to visit one home per month?
Yes, yes.
So since there's twenty-four months and you couldn't go for some months, presumably it's, what, less than ten?
Ten to fifteen, yeah.
Hmm.
During the COVID um period, did you attempt to link in with any of the houses virtually?
Yes.
About how many houses would you have?
Less than half.
Less than half. Um. I'd now like to turn to some questions specifically about Sophie and Natalie. Um, firstly, some questions that are common to both before I move to some questions specific to Sophie. Um, the first topic that I'd like to ask you about is um the support provided and the communication about the support provided. And I think you've already acknowledged that there were some shortcomings and deficiencies in that respect, is that right?
Yes.
Um, just.
Miss Baker, sorry, sorry, get into detail. Um, Dolly, one more question. I'm trying to understand you and your colleague at senior management. I understand you are a senior, you're called a senior manager. You're part of the senior management of Life Without Barrier?
Uh, not the executive group, no.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe at your level and senior, could you just describe what understanding do you have about the day-to-day life that goes on in group home collectively? Could you just help me understand how would you describe that collective understanding?
Uh, as in, sorry, my, my collective understanding.
You and your colleague at your level and senior management.
Yeah, um, so I think there's, um, you know, there's the staff, there's the, the clients, there's the, the model of home that it is. Um, and then there's the, the operational aspect of that, how that happens. Um, in terms of the, you know, the support being required. Um, every home is, is obviously very, very different, given the support needs of each and individual client. Um, and based on the support needs of those clients and, and based on the relevant funding that they receive, um, the uh support is then uh is rolled out within that group home.
What I'm really getting at is that from a day-to-day um basis, you and your senior colleague, how, how detailed would information would you have about what's going on?
Uh, so, um, yeah, so, so we would receive, um, well, I would particularly, and, and, and my staff that was underneath uh me, and sometimes I'd have some regional directors, operations managers, um, programme coordinators and team leaders. Team leaders were the ones that were responsible for running the day-to-day operations and the routine um of, of the home. Um, and, and they were specifically allocated towards one or two homes. Um, and, and it was their job to, you know, communicate with families, um, look at access routines, support requirements, staffing, um, health requirements. Uh, and um as a, as a State Director, I received regular information in terms of um incident reports, complaints, um, uh routines, good news stories. Um, you know, there's also a, a very key point of that. Um, uh, I would receive information from people with a disability through our Disability Services Advisory Council, uh which is made up of uh people with a disability who talk about their experience and service provision um and how that operates at the day-to-day uh aspect for them. So we would get, uh, I would, um, I would get lots of relevant information in terms of the day-to-day operation of uh a group home, yes.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Mr Dolly, um, you said that you'd never visited the Lismore House when you were State Director. Um, was your attention drawn to any of the issues surrounding the Lismore House that you've considered in this, in, in your statement?
Uh, my, my knowledge of the Lismore House, um, as the State Director, um, particularly around uh, the LWB Worker One and Two.
Yes.
Um, is, is probably where my knowledge in terms of, uh, you know, we're talking about one of the issue, like an issue that came out of the Lismore House, yes.
Okay, so, um, when you were State Director, had anybody ever told you about the sexual assault of Sophie, which occurred just before?
No, I, I.
No, so your, your first awareness of that was in preparation for the commission?
That's correct, yes.
Um, and the incident on the twenty sixth of March involving the two support workers with um Sophie, were you aware of that at the time, or again, first time you were aware of it? Pre- preparing for the.
Uh, no, I was, I was aware of that at the time.
Okay.
I think it was March, uh, twenty-sixth, um, which is when I was the, the State Director, yes.
Okay, I might ask you some more questions about that, um, when we come to that issue. Um, what about the complaints made on behalf of Natalie by Jennifer? Um, were you aware of any of those at the time you were State Director?
No, I was not.
Okay, and do you think that you should have been made of those?
Yes, I do.
Again, I might ask you about those questions some more at that, in, in connection with that, those events when we come to them. Um, so just returning to the overall issue of um support and communication, which you've indicated that there were some shortcomings. And just like to take you to the particulars of some of those shortcomings. Um, now firstly, when Sophie moved in, she and her parents were provided with an emergency transition unit residential statement. Um, and a copy of that, if you look the folder in front of you, the bigger folder, um, it's tab three of the bigger folder for the benefit of the parties. Um, that is bundle C and tab two thirty-eight. A Life Without Barriers residential statement. Um, so this is, this, this is the form of information that was given at the time, that's pre-NDIS, which tells a client what services and support Life Without Barriers is going to provide, is that right? Um, and when we turn to page, um, firstly, it's, on the first page, it's issued on the twentieth of December, and it's covering a period from the sixth of December two thousand and eleven.
Yes.
So this is the first, this is the first um residential statement for Sophie, the first.
Agreement.
Yeah, first agreement.
Yes.
Um, so in, in essence, it's an agreement between Life Without Barriers and Sophie, where Life Without Barriers tells Sophie what kinds of support um and service they'll be providing to her. Um, and if you turn to page three of that statement, um, it tells Sophie what the rent component, the board component is going to be of the cost. And then under the heading Support Details, it tells Sophie and her parents, um, what level of support will be offered. Um, and it says overnight support type sleepover, and then hours of direct support care are provided. Um, and Monday to Friday is ticked and weekends and holidays are ticked. And.
Yes.
Yes, um, so.
Sorry, did you say the?
Oh, crossed.
Oh.
Um, I'm looking at where it says support details, hours of direct.
Yes, hours of direct support, care services are provided available.
Oh, I see, it's crossed on Monday to Friday.
Crossed on Monday.
And no, no hours.
No hours, um, and so are we, are we to understand from that that this was, uh, this was indicating to Sophie and her parents that she would have twenty-four seven care?
Twenty-four seven care? So.
Seven days a week, every day is ticked, Monday, Friday, weekends and holidays are all crossed. And there's no indication in this document that there will be any hours during the day where she won't receive direct support.
Yeah, by the ticking of the Monday to Friday, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and come back to that shortly. Um, but you'd also agree that the document doesn't tell Sophie or her documents about what support will be provided. Um, for example, will her meals be cooked or will she be taught how to cook? Um, will she be given assistance with financial budgeting? Will she?
No, that's in a document, her IP plan.
Okay, so this document doesn't provide any of that information.
Not that I can see, no.
Um. And. The hours of support that we've spoken about, um, you've agreed that that suggests that she's getting um support each day of the week for all hours of the day. Um, but you've heard evidence, and you've heard evidence from Sophie's parents, Greg and Michelle, that it was their understanding that a worker would always be in the house if Sophie was at home. Um, and would you agree that their understanding is consistent with what they were told in this residential statement?
Uh, at, at the point in time that the residential statement, uh, and again, making, um, from my review, it, it appears that at the point in time that the residential statement was developed, um, there certainly uh appears to be some changes in the routine uh of Sophie over time. Uh, particularly during days, uh, uh, I understand that she went to her day program provider uh and, 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 and employment as well. So, um, that certainly would have changed from the initial, from what I understand, from the initial time, yes.
Um, have you, have you looked at the residential statements that follow this one?
Uh, in terms of this detail.
In terms of these details?
No, not, not in terms of this.
Um, can you take it from me that, you don't need to take it from me, if you turn to tab eight um of that folder, uh, document LWB dot one oh one eight dot triple zero three dot triple zero one. Um, this is a statement that's covering the period from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. Um, and at page three of that statement, we still have hours of direct support care provided, the whole of Monday to Friday and the whole of weekends and holidays.
Yes.
Um, so, um, over this period, no written indication that there is to be a variation of these residential statements, such that she won't be receiving direct care if she's at home, that she will be left at home on some occasions. We don't see that in either of those documents, do we?
No.
So by this period, you mean from two thousand and eleven through to November two thousand and fifteen?
Yes. Um, after these residential statements, um, were, um, well, th- these residential statements were superseded, I think, um, when the NDIS came into effect, is that right? So this was the form right up until the NDIS. Um, and do you know whether in the current forms, um, there is any further information about hours of care or the like? Um, and perhaps, perhaps to assist you in that respect, if I could ask you to go to tab twenty-eight of that folder, the reference is LWB dot one zero one zero dot triple two dot zero three oh nine. Um, is this the document that um was used in place of the residential statement once the residential statement was superseded by the NDIS?
Yes.
Um, and in this document, um, is there any information about the hours of um care that will be provided? care that will be provided?
My understanding, sorry. That the support provided to an individual in this agreement refers to the approved NDIS plan.
Yes.
In which a client has through their NDA meetings and a subsequent plan is approved. And in the, in the provision of support in a group home, a quote was provided for the level of support. And this agreement refers to as per quote.
As per quote, okay. So for, to take a step back. You've heard evidence from Greg and Michelle that it was their understanding that a worker would always be in the house if Sophie was at home. I think you've already agreed with that.
I've heard that, yes.
And you've also heard evidence both from Sophie and from her parents that in fact Sophie was left at home alone on many occasions, but particularly after her suspension from employment and her suspension from reading. For a client in Sophie's position now. How would the client and all their family know the hours that they will be left alone at home without support? Do they have to go back to their NDIS plan, look at the quote, add up the hours and work out what hours of the day they're going to be left alone?
No, so, so the way the plan works is there is an allocation of funding for a specific area of care in which they receive. And that is then broken up into kind of subsections of a plan. And so Sophie and her family would have had access to the plan available in terms of her accommodation setting, the plan and hours in terms of her day program, the plan and hours in terms of her behaviour support and, and therefore also support coordination. Now, there are elements or responsibilities across those in which the funding then needs to be allocated to. And so when one of those aspects, such as funded for day program support, so the agency will not fund an individual to have supported a home if they're at a day program. It's, they, they will not fund the two at the same time. And so if you're funded to go to a day program between, let's say nine to five, that's where your funding is allocated and that sits with an agreement within that provider. If you are, in this case, suspended from your day program, then that, there is, there is no other funding available to provide the support that is required. If you cannot access that funding at the day program provider, so in answer, I guess, to the question, the funding is broken up into segments and that's where the support was required to be at that stage.
Okay, so just to, just to rack this up a little, pre NDIS, the information you get about support is what's contained in those residential statements. And those residential statements suggest that you're getting care seven days a week, twenty four hours a day, but you might not be if there isn't staff available.
And probably just to add in there is again, the same happened pre NDIS in that you would have support for your accommodation.
Yes.
And then you would have support from your day program provider. So I, I take the point that you're making in that the agreement says twenty four seven.
Yeah.
But I also, to the point that Sophie, from what I can see through the relevant information, had funding for support from her day program provider.
Okay.
Yes.
So perhaps cut to the chase, pre NDIS, you'd agree with me that the communication from Life Without Barriers was deficient because it suggested to Sophie and her parents that she was receiving support and care twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, when in fact for those hours when she was supposed to be at a day program, if for any reason she couldn't access the day program, she wouldn't be receiving support and care from Life Without Barriers.
I, I can see that the agreement, you know, certainly indicates twenty four seven care. What I can say is that I'm, I'm aware that there were a few meetings that occurred between the family, Life Without Barriers and the day program, particularly around suspensions. And, and we're talking quite lengthy suspensions too, not one or two days, where up to a month to three to six months. In which there was discussions there that took place to say at these periods of time. Yes, Sophie may not be at, at the group home with relevant support and safety plans put around that, that indicated that they had conversations with Sophie, that they discussed with her. What would appropriate support look like if she needed it, what time they would be away for, when she could call them, who she could call them, should she have a phone on her and, and letting her family know, yes.
Okay, but just, just to take a step back, that written, that first written document is never amended in the parents and Sophie and never given any information that what was set out in that document is not in fact the case.
As far as, I can see that there were meetings that took place.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying in terms of what they were provided in writing, they have a document that tells them that she's getting twenty four hour, twenty four hour care, seven days a week, and in writing, that's never amended.
In writing as per the document?
Let's go to the document.
Certainly, there's certainly information that is in writing to the family to say that these are the support hours in which Sophie would not.
Okay, but focusing on writing as per the agreement.
The, the email trail would also be as per writing.
Yeah, but an email trail is something that can be lost over time, an agreement is something that is provided to the parents. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that you had agreed that there were deficiencies in the communication. Is this not one of the deficiencies that you accept?
I, I, I've certainly said that there were deficiencies in the communication. What I'm saying is that that there was certainly meetings that took place and written correspondence that discusses the changes post a suspension of day program.
Are they referred to in your statement?
I believe they are.
Well, then if there's a break or when there's a break, you might subject to Miss Baker suggesting a different course, you might point us to where these email trails are referred to. But I would like to understand your evidence. Do you suggest that the email trails constituted an amended amendment to the contractual relationship that was entered into in two thousand and eleven?
No, I do not.
It follows, does it not, that Life Without Barriers at all material times were subject to the contractual obligations undertaken in two thousand and eleven?
As per the document, yes.
As per contract.
Which my, my evidence would be that yes, the documents. And yes, there was follow-up correspondence that indicated a differences in service provision timings. But the document that you're referring to was not amended.
Yes, well, if that document constituted a contract, it was never amended on your evidence.
To, to my knowledge of, constitutes a document, I guess.
So you, you're not sure whether the document constituted a contract?
The document constituted a contract.
Right.
It's as to whether the subsequent correspondence constitutes an altering to that.
All right, well, that may be something that will depend upon the contents of the emails that you will point us to in due course. But you appreciate, do you, that if the document of two thousand and eleven constituted a contract? And if pursuant to that contract, Life Without Barriers was required to provide twenty four seven care, then whatever arrangements might have been entered into between Sophie and the NDIS through the NDA would not necessarily alter the contractual obligations of Life Without Barrier?
It, it would in the such as the contract that was provided under the NDIS in terms of the service agreements dated twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Is a new agreement which discusses services provided as per quote, which is directly correlated to the NDA plan that is approved for Sophie for group home service provision.
Where is the reference to as per quote?
Page, sorry, page two.
Page two?
That's the bold with the underline about three quarters of the way down the page on page two.
Yes, well, it might be an interesting point as to whether that actually alters the contractual obligations, assuming they were contractual obligations entered into in two thousand and eleven. But we won't, we won't, I won't press that further, it may involve some legal issues at the moment.
Mr. Lee, I, I said time and it might be appropriate to take a morning tea, Jen, shortly, Chair, but before I do. If I can just make sure I'm clear about this. You've heard evidence from Sophie's parents that they were confused about the hours of support that Sophie was being provided. Basically from the period of time from Gennelba all the way through until the date that Sophie left the Lismore House. You've heard that evidence?
Yes, I have.
And is it your evidence that in respect of the period pre NDIS, if Sophie or her parents wanted to work out whether or not she had direct support on any particular day, at any particular time from Life Without Barriers, they had to firstly look at the residential statement, but then go through all of their emails to see how that had been amended over time. Is, is that your evidence?
My evidence is, yes, as I said at the, the beginning, the communication with families. It was something that, that I've certainly acknowledged, based on what I've heard. You know, did not meet the expectations of the family. And so, you know, we needed to do better in, in ensuring communication with families had taken place in a much more proactive response to the information. What I'm suggesting is that that information was provided, but we certainly should have communicated much better to the family in making them understand or helping them understand the requirements of service provision and hours of support, yes.
And what I'm trying to explore with you is whether this is an issue, one, whether this is a concession that you make only in respect of Sophie and her family, or whether you accept that more generally, Life Without Barriers procedures at the time, which was a residential statement, which tells you that you're getting twenty four, seventy, twenty four hour care, seven days a week, which is then amended on a piecemeal basis by emails and verbal communications, is not a satisfactory way of communicating things as important as whether or not a person is receiving support and care during all hours of the day. Do you accept that Life Without Barriers' systems of communication at that point in time were inadequate?
I can certainly see evidence of where communication had taken place. And very specific communication around, particularly in Sophie's in this instance. In this instance, I can certainly see that staff had taken measures to communicate appropriately, however. What I do say is that if that didn't meet the family's expectations, which I've heard, then, then we needed to do better there. There were certainly elements of Life Without Barriers staff engaging in communication with the family around this specific instance that we're talking about in regards to hours of support.
With respect, that's, that's not my question. My question is about the systems that were in place. And in particular, whether you accept that a system which has an agreement, whether a contract or not, in writing, making a promise, which is then amended by emails and verbal communication, is an adequate system for conveying something as serious as hours of supportive care? Just a yes or no, do you accept that it was sufficient or no?
In this instance? No, I, 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 I accept that they, there should have been better communication in this instance, yes.
Chair, it might be appropriate to take the morning tea break. After the morning tea break, Mr. Dolly, I'll be asking you about those communications that you've spoken about. And in particular, it might be helpful if you can indicate to the commission when the first communications were had with Sophie and her parents post her suspension from reading. Or pro, yes.
All right, well, we'll take a break of fifteen minutes and resume just after twenty past eleven.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Baker.
Mr. Dolly, I think you indicated that over the break, you were going to take a look at your statement to see whether or not you can give us any assistance about when those first communications happened with the parents, indicating that there were going to be blocks of time where Sophie was going to be potentially left alone in the house? And is it the case that you need a bit more time to?
Yeah, I'm going to certainly, given the vast array of volumes of documents, I'm going to need some more time.
Okay, well, we might come back. We might come back to that after the lunch break. But before I do, I'd just like to ask you about two things, three things that are contained in your statement and ask you about these matters and if you need to take that on notice and come back to it after lunch as well, just let me know. So the first thing is that paragraph two oh eight, sub paragraph C of your statement.
From section.
So paragraph two hundred and eight. Have you got that?
Yes.
And so in that paragraph, you make reference to an individual service plan meeting being held?
Yes.
Are they the individual service plans that you spoke to about earlier in your evidence?
Believe so.
And you said that in that meeting, it appears that a home alone assessment was to be completed in order to support Sophie in her goal of developing independent living skills. Do you see that?
Have you got the right paragraph?
Yes.
Yes. Are you able to tell us what a home alone assessment is? Are you, are you familiar with Life Without Barriers home alone assessments? Are they a particular form or a document that gets filled in?
It's either a home alone assessment conducted by Life Without Barriers or in this case, I see I referenced the Service Needs Assessment Profile, which is a SNAP profile. Which is prepared by Agent Disability and Home Care caseworker. It's my understanding that I believe actually the home alone assessment is something that is prepared by the Agent Disability Home Care caseworker.
Okay, and are you able to say from your review of the documents whether that ever occurred?
No, I cannot.
Okay, certainly you don't make any reference in your statement to that having occurred.
No, that's.
But that's potentially something that you can, either you or Ms. Robbs can get back to us, either later today or tomorrow. Secondly, and relatedly, you heard evidence from Sophie about an about an occasion in twenty seventeen um about an occasion when she was left at home alone whilst the staff took residents out to karaoke?
Yes.
Um and do you speak about that incident at paragraph eighty one of your statement? Is that right?
Yes.
Um and you indicate that as a result of that incident, Life Without Barriers said that it would review risk management systems in relation to leaving residents unattended and would review staff training in relation to seizures. Um now, my first question is, um would you agree that it doesn't appear that staff training in relation to seizures uh ever occurred post this incident?
Post the incident?
Yeah, post the incident.
Sorry, I can't comment. I certainly know that uh staff training had occurred, um whether it was.
Post the incident. Um certainly in your statement, you don't make any reference to it happening. Post the incident.
Certainly know uh from from the review of some of the documentation, uh particularly in team meeting minutes.
Yes.
Uh I can see that there is certainly references made to care being provided uh on a number of fronts and seizures are referenced in there.
Okay.
But to my knowledge, whether training was pre or post provided, so I'm not sure.
Um perhaps if I take you to the document that you referred to at that point. Um so in your folder there, it's at tab thirty um and bundle C, tab eighty nine. In the final page of that document, um we have a review of risk management systems signed off with a date completed. Review of staff seizure training, not signed off, not completed.
On page six.
So this is an incident record form. And on page six of seven, details of follow-up taken. We have a date and then there is review of risk management systems leaving customers unattended. And um there are dates completed next to those lines. And then twenty seven, nine, seventeen, review of staff seizure training, no date completed.
Yeah, I take that document as review of risk management systems leaving customers unattended. A person responsible name, um date completed October sixth, twenty sixteen. Given that that two lines is a one recommendation and then underneath that, review of staff seizure training. Uh you could assume that that was also completed, given that there's two dates and signatures there.
Okay, when we, when you say we can assume that, you've also given us staff training records and there's no staff training that relates to epilepsy being completed on October the sixth, two thousand and seventeen. So are you able to comment as to whether or not there was a review of staff seizure training in light of that?
Well, as far as that uh person's responsible in this document is completed, that
Okay.
you know, then that's, that would be my evidence, yes.
Okay. Um.
Is that person still with Life Without Barriers?
I don't believe so.
I could show you another document also dated about the same time. So this is the tab twenty nine of the folder in front of you. Um and that is bundle C, tab three hundred and fifty. And this is a document in, this is an email. Chain of emails from the twenty first of September, two thousand and seventeen. Um and if you proceed three pages into the chain of emails, you see at the bottom of the page, an email sent on the twentieth of September, twenty seventeen at six twelve P M.
Yes.
And then there's a number of um what appears in blue to be um questions with then answers um given. I think this is between the potentially the team leader and the program operations manager. Um now, over the page, the disability program coordinator tells the team leader it is very important that you have a conversation meeting with Sophie and her parents to put together a stay alone at home plan. Um then says, this does not need to be a large extensive document, more like a list of things for Sophie and staff to do in order to reduce risk and be safe. Um and then it sets out that there needs to be a hard copy agreed signed plan and there must be a risk sheet and so on. Um would you agree that this document suggests that as at the twenty first of September, twenty seventeen, there was no stay alone at home plan that had been prepared?
Uh potentially, in that it could have been a iteration of such plan, however, I'm, I I can't comment on whether.
It doesn't say that it's an iteration. It's, it's very important that you have a conversation with her and her parents to put together a stay alone at home plan. You'd accept that?
Yes.
And in your review of the documents, have you seen a stay alone at home plan that was created before twenty one September, two thousand and seventeen?
No.
So before the twenty one September, two thousand and seventeen, although Sophie had been at home um alone on many occasions, um that was done without this written document that should have been created.
Yes.
Um. Now, I I think you also mentioned in your evidence earlier, and this is the issue you're gonna follow up for us over at lunch, that there were discussions about Sophie um being left alone after she was suspended from Reading. And now she was suspended from Reading on the first of August, two thousand and seventeen. And we can see from this document that as at the twenty first of September, twenty seventeen, there hadn't been any assessment of her capacity to stay alone at home. Do you agree with that? I think you already have agreed with that.
Yeah, to my knowledge of, uh been up the review of the material, yes.
Um so based on what we can see from the material and bearing in mind that we don't have a witness who's able to tell us what happened on the ground at the time, would you agree that this indicates that Life Without Barriers had not proactively worked out what should happen with Sophie when she was at home alone during those hours that she should have been at Reading?
To the degree that I can see uh relevant information where staff my recollection of the information is that staff have um provided what they would call a risk assessment process every time that that Sophie um was left at home. Uh so that there certainly was uh work being conducted uh around the provision of Sophie being unattended at home uh as per, you know, some of the independence.
You're telling us that your understanding is that that risk assessment, those communications were occurring before the twenty first of September?
Uh I I before the twenty first.
Before the twenty first of September.
I can't.
You can't, you can't comment on that. Do you agree that at the moment Sophie was suspended from Reading, it was essential at that point in time that Life Without Barriers begin to proactively consider what should happen with Sophie during those hours that she was now gonna be at home alone?
Yes.
And during that period of time, this is pre-NDIS, so as far as her parents are concerned, she's got an agreement that says twenty four hour care.
Yes.
Um and so you agree that um this was an area where Life Without Barriers' communication was clearly deficient?
As, as I said, yes, yes.
Um and an area where Life Without Barriers could and should have done more to proactively assist Sophie through that time.
Yes.
Um. Paragraph one hundred and eighty four of your statement, you um make reference to um an informal investigation regarding complaints by Sophie's mother, Michelle.
Yes.
And one of the topics of complaint is that Sophie was um frequently left alone at the Lismore residence.
Yes.
Uh do you agree that being frequently left alone could at least be capable of constituting neglect um in view of um i- in relation to a person with disabilities such as Sophie?
You mean such a person prone to seizures?
Prone to seizures with left side hemiplegia, cerebral palsy. Not saying that it is neglect, that it's at least capable of constituting neglect as as stated i- in the information that you've set out in your statement.
Probably two parts to the answer to that. One is Sophie's IP goals and SNAP assessments that were done in twenty eleven, twenty fifteen refer to the fact that uh her independent skills were being worked on and actually had developed significantly uh in which the SNAP assessment in two thousand and fifteen shows a downgrading of um skills uh supervision required. Uh her IP goals talk about uh independence, um managing her own life uh in terms of independent skills, travel training a- and the like. Um and in terms of uh a process in which uh an assessment such as the one you're talking about uh is taken, well, that would then be referred to you know, the Quality and Safeguarding Commission to determine that, whether that met the threshold or not, yes.
So what I'm asking though is could it be capable of being neglect in the sense that this is a complaint that requires serious consideration and potentially after investigation, reporting to the NDIS Q S E?
Well, the process, as I said, is that it's not for me to make a determination of whether it constitutes or not.
It's not for you to, that's why, that's why I asked whether it was capable of, not whether it was neglect. The question I'm asking is, should there have been further investigation of that allegation to determine whether or not it should have been sent to the NDIS Q S E?
Uh yes, we certainly should have looked into that uh much further, yeah.
And you you say that it wasn't uplined to the ICU? That's at paragraph one eight five?
Yes, that's correct.
And you'd agree that it should have been uplined to the ICU?
Yes.
And I think you say at paragraph one eighty seven that um it's not apparent from Life Without Barriers' records how the investigation was closed, closed out at all.
That's correct.
Um.
Miss Baker, you're coming back to the document at tab thirty, namely the incident record for, record form. That is the uh incident relating to the seizure while uh Sophie was left alone as residents were taken to karaoke.
Uh it's subject to anything that the witness wanted to elaborate over the lunch break. Um I didn't propose to ask more questions about that if you're on, if you have a question, Chair.
I just wanted to ask a couple of things. If you go to that tab thirty, that's the incident record form relating to the events that occurred on the fifteenth of September when Sophie had to be taken to um hospital by ambulance at uh seven forty five, eight o'clock in the evening. When you look at that document, you see that Sophie apparently had a seizure lasting for ten minutes during the afternoon when she was alone. You see that on page two of seven, in the middle of the page.
Sorry, whereabouts?
Page two of seven, tab thirty. See a heading, de- details of incident? You see that?
Yes.
Third bullet point, fourth bullet point?
Yes.
Seizure early in the afternoon, when the staff were out picking up other residents, Sophie said it lasted for around ten minutes. Then she has the second seizure when staff are out at karaoke that evening.
Yes.
You consider that Life Without Barriers should have taken steps bearing in mind that Sophie had had a seizure in the afternoon to ensure she wasn't left alone in the evening on that day?
Yes, I do. Um I'll also qualify that with uh in that document, I see staff inquired of Sophie as to whether she felt that she would be okay and comfortable staying home.
Yes, I see that.
She usually does.
How would Sophie know whether a second seizure was imminent? Whether or not someone has a disability, if they have epilepsy, a seizure can occur very rapidly, can't it?
Yes.
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 And a seizure, tell me if your understanding is different, it's not uncommon for seizures to come in batches, is it?
Well, not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge?
No.
All right, well, we'll, we'll find out whether that's correct. All right, thank you.
Mr. Dolly, um you've agreed that it should have, that that um incident, oh, sorry, the complaint by Sophie's mother, Michelle, should have been uplined to ICU.
Sorry, are we talking about the seizure or?
The, sorry, the carry, the um, the one, paragraph one eight four, the complaint about um Sophie frequently being left alone at the Lismore residence. That was a complaint that should have been uplined to ICU.
Yes.
Um what about the issue, the incident involving um the epilepsy, which ultimately um results in Sophie being taken to um and by, to hospital by ambulance? Is that something that also should have been uplined to ICU?
Sorry, I'm just trying to recollect the dates of ICU inception.
It's fifteenth of September, you'll find that on page one of seven.
Oh, of the seizure, sorry, in terms of the, the ICU, yes.
Yeah, that should have been uplined to ICU as well.
Yes.
Um and to your knowledge, was it uplined to ICU?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
No. Um. We have a couple of incidents now, and I think over the course of the examination, we'll have more, where you've identified um incidents that should have been, should have come to the attention of ICU. you've identified um incidents that should have been, should have come to the attention of ICU that haven't. How can you assure the commission that future incidents of this nature will be uplined to ICU?
Uh, well, I think in my evidence, uh, you can see uh that the organisation's taken significant steps in terms of uh establishing a national safeguarding unit, um that uh requirement of uh that national safeguarding unit is reviewing all uh all, all incidents that take place. Um, secondly to that, uh, there is a significant amount of uh incident management training um that occurs within the organisation, both at a learning management system, but also in a team meeting minute system, uh, and that is a training that is cascaded through uh all the way up um the, 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 the management line, uh, and so it is, it is trained and, and, and recognised uh that incident management such as these uh should be logged uh into the system, and then that system will capture uh the, the criticality of that and subsequent actions taking place.
So in relation to the epilepsy incident, um are you telling us that an incident record, record form like what we see at tab thirty, that that will now be necessarily reviewed by that body that you've spoken about? Regardless of whether it's identified as a reportable incident or not?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and you've said that there's further training, has that tra- is that training mandatory?
I believe it's part of our core pathway, so yes.
Okay. Um, and do you have records um ensuring that all staff have completed that training?
Uh, either completed or uh engaged to complete, yeah.
Does the training have assessment as part of it?
Most of our uh LMS training has a competency based assessment to it, yes.
Um, so are you confident that with the additional systems and training that you have in place, that incidents like this epilepsy incident um will be captured by the systems and training that you have?
Uh, through the system, the training, uh, and, and the expectation.
Okay. Um, but at, at the time, I take it, um, your explanation as to why these shortcomings occurred was um that the training was deficient in that it's not as extensive it is now, and the systems were not as extensive as they are now.
Uh, well, I'm not, uh, as I said, I was not in the organisation.
No.
Uh, at that time.
I appreciate that, but you're the witness who's giving evidence about events at that time.
Yeah, in terms of my knowledge as the system's current date.
Yes.
Um, as I've explained, that's how uh the process should work.
I'll move on to um another topic, um resident consultation and compatibility. Um, now I think that that's another topic that you've indicated you have identified as being the subject of some shortcomings and deficiencies.
Yes.
Um, so I'd just like to explore um the extent of those and the particulars of those. So firstly, the question of consultation, um you've heard evidence from Michelle, Greg and Sophie that there was no consultation or indeed any notice that the resident Tyler was going to be moving in.
Yes, I've heard that.
Um, and you accept that there was no notice given to any of it?
From our review, yes, yeah.
Um, now, in terms of the policies at the time, you were asked in the question, immediately bo- above question, uh, paragraph thirty seven of your statement, um, you were asked the question, were existing residents and all their families required to be consulted before a prospective resident was offered a place? You've only answered that question by reference to policies that postdate the NDIS.
Paragraph thirty six?
In paragraph thirty seven, um, so the question is question D. Were the existing residents and all their families required to be consulted before a prospective resident was offered a place? Then at paragraph thirty seven, you answer that question, and you answer it with a paragraph that begins following the introduction of the NDIS.
Yes.
Um, do I take it that um prior to the introduction of the NDIS, there was no policy that provided that there should or should not be consultation before a prospective resident was offered a place?
No, there certainly is a policy.
Okay. Which policy, uh, pre NDIS require, well firstly, what did the policy provide?
In terms of?
Consultation.
Consultation, uh, that consultation should have occurred with them.
Okay. And which policy said that consultation should occur prior to the NDIS?
I believe it's an intake uh policy that I, that I've certainly reviewed, I can obviously go and have it on me.
Okay, perhaps you can come back to that after lunch as well. Um, but certainly your understanding was it that even at the time, consultation was required?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, it was consultation required even um in relation to emergency accommodations such as the Ganelle of our house, or were the policies different from emergency accommodation?
No, um, the, the, the policy applies in that uh residents should be consulted in, in, in how staff, uh, sorry, clients come into um in, into a property. There, there are circumstances in which, uh, due to emergency uh accommodation requirements for, um, you know, a particular participant, where that may happen faster than an original transitional date um may occur, and so I'm certainly aware of examples over my time where um, you know, the, particularly in this relevant period where the um New South Wales State Government would call and say, uh, we needed a, an emergency requirement for accommodation, and that could have been at twelve o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Yes.
But there was no suggestion that Tyler was that kind of emergency accommodation? So your understanding of the policies at the time was um that Natalie, um, well, Sophie and also Natalie, who was there at the time, should have been consulted about Tyler coming into the home?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so um is your evidence that the failure to consult constituted a contravention of the policies at the time?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Um, and uh it's a case that when Tyler moved in, Naomi, Natalie and Sophie were already in the house?
I believe so.
If I can just get you to turn back to that residential statement that we looked at earlier at tab um three, which is um bundle C, tab two, three, eight. It says, um, have you? So this is the residential um statement, date issued twenty twelve, two thousand and eleven. Page four, we have um a heading, transport, and then a heading, who else lives here? Can you say that?
Yes.
And under that, it says the house caters for up to three residents, including you.
Yes.
Um, so I think you've already accepted that Tyler was the fourth resident in this house.
Yes, that's obviously changed, yes.
Yes. Um, is there any documentation, any Life Without Barriers documentation that you've seen that records why and how the decision was made that the house could now have four residents, and whether that was a decision of the department or Life Without Barriers?
Uh, no, nothing.
Um, and um would you, in your review of the documents, have you seen any document that indicates um that Sophie and her parents were ever notified that the house was now going to be catering for, for residents rather than up to three?
No.
And would you agree that um particularly in circumstances where they've been told that it's up to three residents, it was particularly important that they be notified of that significant change?
Yes.
Um, now, you've also heard evidence that Sophie and her parents um said that they felt that that support workers had less time for Sophie after Tyler moved in. Um, can you tell us, were any additional support workers employed when Tyler came into the home?
Uh, I, I couldn't answer that, I guess, yes.
Perhaps we'll take that up with Miss Robbs tomorrow. Um, and then also there's another resident that comes into the home, um, resident Lucy, um, who comes into the home in twenty seventeen. Um, now by twenty seventeen, it's certainly not emergency accommodation at that stage.
Uh, sorry, what document are you referring to?
Firstly, before I take you to the document, twenty seventeen, we're not talking about emergency accommodation. Whenever that date of change is, it's definitely changed by twenty seventeen. Um, and as far as you're aware, the policies in twenty seventeen also required consultation. Um, now, um, if you turn to tab twenty five, that's an email from the team leader to the um programmes operations manager, a disability programme coordinator. Oh, yes, um, reminded my, by my um instructing solicitor that I need to give a bundle for the assistance of um parties online, and it is um bundle G, tab one ninety one. Um, so would you agree that that email indicates that um when Lucy uh was introduced into the house, there was also no notice and no consultation about that? Like, it seems that the team leader was.
Sorry, with who?
Sorry, that, that Lucy.
Yes.
That there was no consultation with the existing residents, all their families when Lucy came in as well.
Yes.
Um, and you would, I accept, I take it, that that also constituted a contravention of the relevant policies at that time?
Yeah, like I've said, we should, we should consult on every occasion, yes.
Um, so if I can well firstly, before I turn to the current policies, are you able to give any explanation as to why in relation to both of these residents, there was no consultation in contravention to the policy that you recall?
Uh, no, I can't.
Okay. Um.
Did you become aware of uh these failures, and in particular the second one in March two thousand and seventeen, when you took up your position in two thousand and eighteen?
No, I did not.
What steps did you take when you took up your position, if any, to ensure that the staff and residents uh that the families and the residents were in fact consulted?
Uh, specifically to, to the case?
No, generally.
Uh, in, in general, um, when I took up my role, uh, did a relevant handover with uh the previous director, uh, and within that conversation, uh, had a conversation around relevant uh key areas in which uh needed attention, um, but no, this was not one that, that came up through that discussion.
So may I take it from that answer that there was nothing that alerted to you to uh the possibility that there may be a problem as far as Life Without Barriers was concerned in consulting with existing residents and families when a new person was coming into a group home?
Uh, to the point that very early on in my start, uh, I was uh a- aware, very well aware of the policy uh requirements and the practice in which that takes uh through visibly seeing it uh in practice, uh, where a panel uh and consultation has taken place, and an appropriate uh resident uh is offered a spot in a, in a group home. So I'd, I'd certainly seen it uh in a, in a very positive light where the consultation had taken place and uh subsequent steps had, had been made, so, um, you know, so from, from my understanding when I started, uh, that that was a practice in place.
When was the panel established?
Well, the policy requirement has always been that uh uh information gathered, uh, that gathering of information uh through consultation uh takes place where a number of people congregate and provide recommendations up to the relevant regional manager, who then makes a decision on uh whether the compatibility is uh based on all the information compatible or not. So I've, I've certainly seen that from my start.
My question is, when was the panel created?
I think the panel has always been in the policy.
And yet, despite the panel having always been the policy, your predecessor in the office apparently either was unaware or did nothing about the failure to consult that occurred in March two thousand and seventeen at this facility?
Well, in terms of what the predecessor did, I, I can't comment.
I know, but what steps did you independently take to ensure that the policy was actually implemented?
Uh, well, refer, refer to my previous answer where I've said that I had, I had sat in on uh and watched practice occur in which showed uh a panel constitute through the consultation of family and residents, a new resident entering a facility. So I have certainly seen that and then certainly uh managed that um uh ongoingly in my, my previous role.
Yeah. I'd thank you. Yes, Ms Baker.
Um, so turning to the um policies now, which you're more familiar with than the policies at the time, so the policy that applies now, uh, according to your statement in paragraph thirty seven, is the NDIS LWB three one one vacancy management procedure, is that right?
Yes.
Um, and do you um helpfully summarise that for us and tell us that it requires local operations staff, including team leaders, to consult with existing clients, either individually or at household meetings during the course of identifying a preferred prospective applicant? You then tell us that the purpose of the consultation is twofold, to maximise existing clients' choice, decision making and control regarding who they live with, and to seek input into what would maximise household harmony when identifying visible applicant. So that's your understanding of the policy?
Yes.
Um, now, in front of you is a policy folder, um, it's the other folder. If you turn to, um, it should be tab eighty seven, but if your numbers are like mine, then it might be seventeen. Uh, and the uh Life Without Barriers number is um LWB dot uh one zero, oh, sorry, one zero one nine dot triple zero two dot double O four. I think.
It's double O double.
Uh, thank you, Chair, um, and I think it's bundled, um, CC tab three. Um, so.
Sorry, you said tab eighty seven?
Yes, so tab, tab eighty seven of your folder. Um, and if you turn to page six of that policy, stage three, identifying a preferred applicant, can you say that?
Yes.
Um, and then the last um sentence of that passage before the table starts, um, it says, local operations should consult with existing residents. Um, and pretty much in the same terms that you have extracted in your statement.
Yes.
Yes. Um, now, my first question is, we have in this policy very clearly defined and numbered steps. They are steps one through to uh twenty nine, and at the end of the policy, there's a really helpful flow chart which numbers all of those steps.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes.
Um, and this requirement to consult occurs in between steps sixteen and seventeen.
Yes.
Uh, so it doesn't appear in the really helpful flow chart.
Uh, no, it doesn't.
No. Um, do you agree that to ensure that consultation isn't overlooked again in the future, it might be helpful to put a step requiring consultation into that flow chart?
Uh, yes, I. Uh, yes, I mean, I agree that the flow chart is obviously a surmising of the twenty nine steps, but yes.
It is.
Yes.
But consultation is a critical, uh, component. You'd agree with that?
Uh, yes.
And it's not something that should be overlooked?
Not shouldn't be.
Uh, and so to ensure that it's not overlooked, it would be appropriate for it to be in the flow chart?
Yes.
Um, and what, what we do have in the flow chart, um, and in the steps, is step seventeen, which is minimum of two staff, complete the vacancy man, management client matching form. Um, now, if you could just turn to the next tab, so that's, um, tab eighty eight, LWB dot one, zero, one, nine, dot, triple, zero, two, dot, one, zero, z, one, sorry, dot, zero, one, zero, six. Um, bundle CC, tab five, um. Can you see that?
Yes.
That form? Um, now, if I could just ask you, um, to where the form begins on page two. Um, so we have details of, um, the, um, the, the meeting in which the applications for residency will be considered. That's the client match, client matching committee meeting. Is, is that right?
Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm not sure I had
So page, page two, we've got this form, perhaps if I ask it this way, who's filling in this form?
Uh, so this is the form, um, in which, uh, you know, it could be relevant team leader or, and or one of those, you know.
The other person that needs to fill in the form.
Yeah, um, determines in, uh, matching, uh, appropriate applicant compared to the compatibility of others.
Okay. And so the team leader with the other person making the decision with them will include details of the date of the discussion, how many applications have, um, are received, and then over the page, um, are required to fill in details of the name, age, gender, cultural background, disability and impairments, health needs, sensory needs, support requirements, behaviours of concern, night time supports, risk assessment, day activities, mobility, communication skills, strengths, interests, preferences, funding plan status and other information.
Yes.
Um, so do you agree that, um, and then over the page, we have more details about the house, description of the rooms, um, current roster, dynamics and other specific issues?
Yes.
And do you agree that nowhere in that form does it prompt, um, the decision makers to indicate that there has been consultation or what the result of the consultation is?
Yes.
Um, do you agree that that is also something that could be fixed in the future to ensure that consultation isn't overlooked?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then just returning to your statement at ta, at paragraph thirty seven, um, you note that in the procedure, it provides for consultation with the, um, with the clients, but makes no specific provision for consultation with families. I think you say in relation to family, routine practice is that the team leader or program manager will consult.
Yes.
Um, well firstly, um, you've said in your evidence that you oversee about, well, when you were state director, you oversaw about a hundred and thirty five houses, and you weren't involved in the day-to-day management of those houses.
That's correct.
How are you able to tell us what routine practice is at that point? Is that just from the consultations that you observed?
As in routine practice?
Yeah, when you say it's routine practice, how do you know it's?
Uh, routine in that one I've observed it personally.
Yeah.
Take place. Um, and in some occasions, uh, where there is no, uh, family um, and or guardian.
Yep.
Then it is specifically the client, um, that, uh, that is involved in that, so.
Obviously, if there's no family or guardian, then we're not talking about anything other than client consultation, which is provided for by the policy. What I'm interested in is the policy doesn't say that there should be any consultation with families, but you tell us that it's routine practice for families and authorised decision makers to be consulted, and I'm just wondering how you are able to tell us that it's routine practice?
Well, from the, from the experience that I've seen it.
Okay, and how many consultations have you seen?
Over, over my time as a
Uh, 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 over your time in Life Without Barriers?
Oh.
You mean consultation with parents or guardians of residents?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Um, yeah, I've certainly seen it on a number of occasions, particularly where
We're talking more than ten, more than fifty?
Yeah, yeah, more than twenty, I, I would say, uh, in, in my time.
What form have they taken?
Uh, the, the, generally in conversation, uh.
In person, over the phone?
Uh, both. You know, in, in, in many occasions where families are, uh, and or guardians, um, are involved in it, that can, that can go from a meeting uh, to a, to a phone call, um, in, in whatever preferences, I guess, in terms of that particular family or guardian wants to receive that information.
And who is responsible for undertaking a consultation in accordance with the practice you have identified?
Uh, to be the team leader and or, uh, the coordinator.
And why are you, but why were you involved in ten or more of this?
Uh, one to view the practice myself, um, and, uh, I have, uh, received, uh, you know, over my time, it's, it's helpful to go in and have a look, um, to observe practice, uh, to make sure that it's uh, adequate, and also, you know, part of a process in terms of review that I may have undertaken over my period of time would be to look at, uh, you know, relevant areas being, being implemented within the business.
Before you go on, um, leave this topic and just to follow up on the Chair's questions, um, I'd like to ask you more about, um, consultation and choice, and whether the residents are assisted with supported decision-making, um, to actually choose, um, uh, potential, um, residents to come in, more, more, what consultation can be tick-a-box too. So I'd be interested in how many, um, times residents have said no to somebody where they then haven't gone into the house. Um, but I'm interested in, in both residents and parents and families, but also guardians, and whether they've really involved themselves in this, um, fully. So just a little more information, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Um, now, there's certainly, uh, to, to, I think, your first, your second question there around, um, guardians, um, you know, I could probably say from, from my relevant experience, um, where a guardian is appointed, uh, you know, there are degrees in which, uh, some guardians engage in the process, um, as, as opposed to others, and, and I've certainly seen some very kind of positive proactive, uh, engagement from guardians on the wishes of, um, you know, client compatibility, uh, particularly in terms of need and support. Um, and, uh, and, and to your first question, I think, Commissioner, um, I, I've certainly, uh, seen and know of cases where, uh, consultation has occurred and based on relevant information or feedback, uh, within that consultation with families or clients, that, uh, they've not proceeded with uh, a particular individual moving into that home. So, um, you know, I've, I've certainly seen practice of that occurring where uh, choice and control is certainly administered and, and, uh, and clients, families and guardians, uh, have have exercised that right, and a subsequent decision, um, following through panel to a regional manager has resulted in not proceeding with, uh, the relevant individual.
To follow up on Commissioner Gelsley's question, are there records that demonstrate how often this occurred?
Uh, there, there would, there would be, yes.
And no doubt you or Miss Robbs could locate them for us.
Uh, we could, yeah, that's very good.
Um, so just to follow up on two aspects of that. Firstly, in relation to the routine practice, um, of consulting with family members or authorised decision makers, um, if it is routine practice and it should happen, is there any reason why it's not in the policy?
Uh, no, there's no reason.
Do you agree that it would be helpful for the policy to be amended to expressly provide that there should be consultation with family members and or guardians or other authorised decision makers?
Uh, yeah, where, I would say, yes, yes.
Um, and then the other question is, I think you've told us that you have seen occasions where, um, as a result of that consultation, Life Without Barriers has decided not to go ahead with a particular resident, maybe to go ahead with a different client instead. Was that the effect of what you were telling us?
Or, or not to go ahead with
Or not to go ahead with, at all. Um, I assume though that residents and families don't have a right of veto, um, that, that even if they say that a, a resident, they don't want a particular resident to come into the hi, house, Life Without Barriers reserves the right to say, well, notwithstanding your views, we think that it is appropriate.
Within the process, yes, there is a, a, a decision that is made, yes.
Okay, um, do you, uh, well firstly, the procedure at the moment doesn't contain, um, any guidance around what should occur if a decision is made that is contrary to the views expressed by a client and or their family. Do you agree with that?
Uh, a, 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 a relevant complaint could be made, yes.
Um, do you agree that it would, might be helpful for the procedure to provide some guidance around that consultation in terms of what, um, in what circumstances uh, a decision could be made to accept or reject a resident that's contrary to a client's views, and to ensure that there is proper communication with the client or clients if a decision is made which is contrary to, uh, the views expressed in that consultation?
Yes.
Um, and is that also things that you agree that the policy could be improved by including?
Absolutely.
Um. All right. I now wish to move to a topic of resident compatibility, which is related to the topic we've been speaking about. Um, now, Ganelaba, as we've discussed, was emergency accommodation, um, when it was, um, first established? When it was that form of emergency, um, accommodation, was there any resident compatibility assessments that were made at that point?
Uh, I can see certainly from reviewing information where, uh, conversation, uh, had taken place in terms of compatibility, but in terms of actual documentation of what we've, we've gone through here now.
When you say, um, you've seen documents of conversations around that.
Or emails.
Um, emails around that, um, who do they relate to, which residents?
Uh, they specifically relate to, uh, I, memory. Right, Sophie. I believe Sophie and another resident had known each other, uh, for quite a significant period of time. Sorry, I'm not sure.
Yes, I think it was Sophie and Naomi, yes. Um, is that the extent of the resident compatibility, um, discussions that you can recall seeing in the papers? Um, and certainly you'd accept, based on the document I showed you earlier about the resident Lucy, that there was no assessment of resident compatibility in relation to Lucy?
Yes.
In fact, the day provider, um, indicated that there were going to be some problems with Lucy moving in.
Yes.
Um, do you, well, in terms of the policies for resident compatibility at the time, um, so looking particularly at the time that Tyler came into the house, um, were, was it a requirement that there be assessment of resident compatibility in the Ganelaba home?
Uh, yes, it was.
Um, and on your review of the documents, um, did that assessment occur?
No.
Um, and so you'd agree that that is a contravention of that policy?
Yes, as I said, yeah, that should have, should be consulted, consultation, yes.
Um, and that consultation, I think you say, should have been with the existing clients and also with Sophie's parents, Natalie's parents, uh, Natalie's mother and the like.
Uh, and the potential incoming.
And the potential incoming.
Yes.
And potentially, um, other sources of information such as day service providers, um, who might be able to add in some additional, um, information to assist in that decision.
Well, yes, anybody who, I guess, would have kind of relevant knowledge to add, um, could be involved in that process.
Um, the process of client matching under the current policies is, I think we've seen much more involved um, and much more documented than it was at that point in time?
Yes.
Um, and you explain at thirty one of your statement, we've covered this in part by looking at the relevant policy and the relevant um, matching form, that considerations need, relevant considerations include um, matters such as age, gender, cultural background, support needs, communication skills and behaviours of concern. Um, you've heard evidence of Sofiana, her parents, that they don't think that she was well matched in the house, um, in particular um, once Tyler arrived.
Um, yes, I've heard that.
And, um, in particular, that Sophie's communications skills were very different to the communication skills of the other residents in the house, and that her physical needs were very different to the other residents in the house.
Yes.
Um, and would you accept that that's a particular risk for Sophie, firstly in that the immediate needs of more higher needs residents such as Tyler may well end up taking precedence on a day-to-day basis compared to her more long-term needs of, um, advancing her independence and making relationships?
Potentially, yes.
Um, and in terms of her communication skills, Sophie's communication skills were such that she, um, was going to find it difficult to form relationships with the other residents, in particular with Na, Natalie and Tyler. Um, so applying today's current policies and these more involved, um, assessments, if one had a home with Natalie, Tyler and Naomi in it today, what would your expectation be as to whether Sophie would be considered compatible with that house or not?
Uh, applying current day.
Yeah, current day.
Current day thinking, uh, with, uh, current day supply, um, which I think is important.
Yes.
Um, so we're comparing the twenty eleven ten scenario with the current day thinking in that, uh, we're talking about, and I think, I think everybody, um, within Sophie's structure of support, being family day programme, had made acknowledgement over the very relevant period of time that uh, the, the client compatibility and placement, um, was not one that was one meant to be long-term, and there was subsequent, subsequent transitions that unfortunately didn't happen. Um, but in the Lismore area at that time, uh,
So if I can just stop you, the question is just about today. I'll ask you a second question, which is explaining what happened with Sophie. My question at the moment is just, a client who is relevantly in the same position as Sophie, has the same disabilities, the same communication, would she be placed with a house like this today?
And I don't believe she would.
Okay, and now, now I think you're into answering the other question that you jumped ahead to, which is an explanation as to why Sophie was in this house at this time. And as I understand it, your answer is, um, firstly, that there were differences in supply, there simply weren't as many houses available, is that right?
Uh, certainly, for my understanding, yes.
Um, and secondly, because Sophie came in under arrangement that was supposed to be transitional, um, there wasn't the same kind of resident compatibility decisions as you would have nowadays if Sophie was coming into an, an existing home.
It was certainly, yes, from my reading, it was certainly an emergency transition due to uh, some things that were happening at home and also some relevant health needs as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so yes, it was an emergency, uh, situation.
Um, and then you say for various reasons, it wasn't possible for her to transition out.
Uh, no, so what I'm saying is that there were, uh, attempts made, um, uh, for her to transition out.
Yeah.
Uh, a transition plan in one particular instance, uh, where she'd spent a night in what was to be an appropriate accommodation setting for her, but however that, uh, circumstances led up to that experience, um, Sophie did not want to leave. Um, there was regular meetings with families, day provider and L W B and clinicians that recognised that uh, Sophie's environment and compatibility in the household was not okay. And, uh, she would be more compatible in other residents. However, all those searches over that relevant period of time, uh, amounted to, you know, uh, not being able, possible for her to move.
Okay, so, um, in those circumstances where it was clear that it, she, um, did not have uh, the, her compatibility with the other residents was not as it should have been. Um, but in those circumstances, supporting Sophie in that house required very careful management of Sophie and very, and careful attention to the supports that she required.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, in the Life Without Barriers, um, records, there's some, um, documents of community visitors and uh, bundle G three O six, I think I have it in, oh, I'm looking at my policy folder. Um, if you look, I think it's tab thirty eight. Of your mini bundle.
Uh, which one, sorry?
Uh, so tab thirty eight, not of the policy fol- folder, the, um, other folder. So tab thirty eight, um, has particular question after indicating some concerns about Sophie and indicating that, um, this is at the bottom of the page, she's very conversational, relies on conversation to make connection. None of the other residents in this house have the ability to be able to clearly communicate and engage in conversation with Sophie. And it ends, I be- believe Sophie to be lonely and seeking companionship with someone of equal intellect and similar interests and capacity for conversation. The community visitor then asks what efforts have been made to address Sophie's issues of loneliness and need for companionship. Um, in your review of the, uh, documentation, does that report, um, ever appear to be answered by Life Without Barriers?
So it's the first time I've seen this.
Oh, this is the first time you've seen this.
So, um, in in terms of the answer, no.
No, um, if I could just then ask you to turn over to the very next tab, just tab thirty nine, bundle G. Have three thirty, um, there's another communicat- uh, community visitors' report, which I assume you also haven't seen.
These documents, Miss Baker, that go to Life Without Barriers, are we clear about that?
Uh, it's a document that we have received from Life Without Barriers, um, as indicated by the L W B tag at the top of the document.
Thank you.
Um, and at, on the second page of that document, follow up on previous issues, um, and again, the issues can raised, uh, concerns about Sophie, limited planned activities, leaving her a lot of time where she has no clear purpose. And then a page two, follow up on previous issues, I did not receive a response from Life Without Barriers to my last report, I would appreciate a response in order to be better informed on what's planned for residents. So based on that, it appears that Life Without Barriers hasn't answered the community visitors' concerns.
Yeah.
Um, and do you accept, based on those documents which you've just seen, but also the evidence that you've read and heard, that Life Without Barriers, uh, should have done more to support, um, Sophie during her time in the Lismore houses?
Uh, I think you can see through the relevant material, um, in which I've acknowledged as well already, in that, uh, more to be done, uh, with Sophie, uh, in a number of areas. Um, and so I acknowledge that and absolutely agree, uh, that 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 is the case. Um, what I also, um, acknowledge within that, and then particularly in this relevant period too, is that, uh, there, and subsequent to the relevant period that we're talking about here, there was a number of applications in that, uh, submitted to the agency, uh, request for funding, uh, to increase services to be able to provide it to Sophie. Uh, for particular things that are noted in, and again, first time I've, I'm sorry, first time I reviewed these, but particular areas that are certainly noted in, in, uh, in these community visitor reports, yes.
Um, when you say applications to the agency, do you mean to the N D I A?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Um, and, um, do I take it from that answer that you considered those matters to be largely the N D I A's responsibility rather than Life Without Barriers' responsibility?
No, no, I do not.
Okay, so you, do you accept that particularly in circumstances where there were these concerns about resident compatibility, if the N D I A wasn't providing the support, it was necessary for Life Without Barriers to step up and provide it?
Uh, no, uh, to answer that question, the N D I A provides the support through the funding, which is directly attributable to the amount of hours in which a person receives. Now, the hours that they receive can be attributable to the significant work that goes on with those individuals. And so there is an absolute correlation there, that if, if, uh, if, in which we said, and everybody within Sophie's social structure said that she was inadequately funded, directly links to the fact that there were not enough hours of support to go to all the things that are in, uh, Sophie's life in which I absolutely agree needed to be accounted for and developed and worked on.
So I, if I can just make sure I understand the answer to the question before last, um, I asked whether or not you considered that it was effectively the N D I A's responsibility, and I thought you answered no, it was also Life Without Barriers' responsibility in circumstances where the funding was falling short. How is, in in what respect do you say Life Without Barriers should take responsibility for the lack of support provided to Sophie throughout this time?
Oh, I, to to try and clarify my point, I think, is that what I'm saying is that where funding is received for an individual, it determines the amount of hours in which that individual, uh, receives support. And what we were saying is that those hours and that funding needed to be, uh, more support to go to the relevant needs of Sophie. And there are a number of applications that you can see over the period of time where, uh, that support was knocked back in terms of additional funding for for Sophie. Um, and then when she subsequently leaves, uh, that, uh, and I think as you, um, would have seen with the N D I S, um, individual that was on, uh, the funding almost doubles in some cases. So again, it says that, uh, Sophie's requirements in terms of hours support that she needed was much more than what she was actually getting funded for within L W B.
Okay, so just to return to my question, which is, to what extent does Life Without Barriers take responsibility for this? Because to my mind, what you're saying is this is the fault of the N D I A who hasn't adequately funded her. So are you, are you saying that responsibility is on the N D I A or only on the N D I A? Or do you also say that Life Without Barriers shares responsibility? And if so, how?
You know, I'm saying that, that, uh, and as I've acknowledged, um, throughout the day, is that there are fundamental parts here that, in terms of Sophie's life, that that L W B, uh, should have and and, uh, needed to do better in in the care provided. I'm also saying that some of that, uh, is directly attributable to the funding that she received.
Okay, so we understand what you say about the in adequacy of funding. But in relation to this issue of support and in particular what the community visitors are saying about the fact that Sophie is being left in an environment where she doesn't have anyone to communicate with, she's left alone for too long at her own devices, she's becoming lonely. Can understand what you say about how the N D I A has responsibility for like any deficiencies in funding which have led to that situation, but in concrete, um, in concrete terms, what is Life Without Barriers' responsibility for that situation?
In terms of her funding or?
Well, in, I I thought that you had.
No, no, in terms of fixing the problem, the problem is identified in the community visitors' report. I think what Miss Baker is asking you is what is precisely the responsibility of Life Without Barriers in that situation, recognising that applications to the N D I A either haven't been resolved or haven't been successful?
Uh, so in terms of the application to the N D I A and our responsibility in that, uh, it's actually the responsibility of support coordinators.
Not asking about that. We're asking you about what's the responsibility, if any, of Life Without Barriers to address the situation that Sophie found herself in, given that there were not additional supports for the moment at least, coming from the N D I A.
I think within the supports that were available to her within the required funding, it was our obligations and responsibility, sorry, uh, to ensure that the appropriate care took place, uh, within that relevant time of support. And so in answering the question, particularly regarding, uh, Sophie, um, there, there is an absolute fact that, uh, potentially or particularly around some of the time that she was spending uh, on her own, a more structured environment around, uh, some of those activities, um, could and should have occurred. Um, and then working with, uh, the relevant key people in Sophie's life to structure, uh, more appropriate engagement, uh, in, uh, things such as, you know, relationships and friendships, um, and, uh, and also, you know, the the working of, uh, helping her with her independence and and that. So yes, I I absolutely think it was our responsibility within that sphere of those hours to to make sure that that was occurring.
Do I take it from your answer that Life Without Barriers takes the view that if there is no funding through the N D I A for anything outside the specified hours, Life Without Barriers would never contemplate using its own resources to deal with the situation such as Sophie found herself in, pending a favourable outcome from the N D I A?
Uh, to answer that question, though, I've certainly, uh, seen where, uh, Life Without Barriers has used its own, uh, uh, financials, um, to, um, to a point where we weren't satisfied with, uh, the level of funding, um, and engaged with, uh, the, the N D I A uh, around that relevant funding, uh, where the N D I A still disagrees with this.
When you're saying gauge, you mean you ask the N D I A for more money?
Uh, in within that process, yes.
I understand that Life Without Barriers would ask the N D I A for more money. That would ultimately flow to Life Without Barriers. What I'm asking is whether Life Without Barriers, even without the expectation of the N D I A providing money, would in some circumstances, in order to alleviate, for example, distress or extreme loneliness, would use its own resources independently of what the N D I A was doing?
Uh, oh, I'll probably answer that, sorry, Chair, with, um, that the N D I S was set up to ensure that.
Could you answer my question, please? I don't need an historical analysis.
I don't think it's a responsibility of service providers.
All right, if the answer to it is you don't do it, and can you answer the next question? What are the, uh, accumulated funds of Life Without Barrier as of thirty June two thousand twenty one?
I'm not sure of.
If you look at the annual report, I think you'll see forty nine to fifty million dollars. Yes, all right, shall we take a, um, shall we take the break now?
If it's convenient.
Yeah, how long do you want the break to be?
Uh, is this a lunch break? Um, yes, sorry, I've lost.
It's, it's twelve forty, so I assume, I assume we're round about lunch now.
Um, I'm entirely in your honour's hands.
Well, if we take an hour, will there be enough?
An hour is, an hour is.
Will there be enough time for you to complete your examination of Mr. Dolly? All right, well, we'll take one hour.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
Uh, Mr. Dolly, I'd like to move now to, um, a topic of, again, involving Sophie, uh, a question of intimacy and facilitating relationships. Um, now you've heard Sophie's evidence that she wasn't permitted to have her fiance stay over. Um, she thought that the reason for that was because he would be a hindrance. Um, and, but do you, did you hear that evidence?
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, in your review of the documents today indicates, would you agree with me that they indicate that, um, the concern of staff members was expressed as staff, uh, as safety concerns in various of the meeting minutes? Have you seen those documents? Um, and would you agree that over a nine month period, those safety concerns are repeatedly raised in the meeting minutes?
Yes.
And over that nine month period, the safety concerns are never identified?
Uh, identified.
But nobody ever says in the meeting minutes what the safety concerns were.
Oh, to the detail, sorry, no.
Um, and certainly the safety concerns were never resolved, there's no indication in the documentation that Sophie was ever allowed to have her fiance come and stay over.
No.
Um, I'd like to ask you some questions about the policies that were exist- in existence at the time. Now, I'll cut to the chase, um, your understanding of the policies that were then in existence, should Sophie have been allowed to have her fiance stay over?
Sorry, were were there?
So basically, you've you've set out in your, um, statement at paragraph two hundred and twelve, um, in particular, paragraph, um, A, um, you set out various policies that relate to the facilitation and restriction of intimate relationships over the period from December two thousand eleven to May twenty nineteen.
The policies that relate to that, yes?
Yes, and the question I'm asking is your reading of the policies that were in place at the time that Sophie was seeing her fiance, that's from twenty thirteen through to twenty fifteen, should she have been permitted to have her fiance stay over the night?
Oh, sorry, yes, absolutely. I I absolutely agree that, you know, in that case, Sophie should have been able to have, and we certainly should have facilitated uh, Sophie to have, uh, her her partner over, yes.
And and that's primarily the disability service principles that you make reference to in your statement, which acknowledge that people with disabilities have the same needs for intimate relationships that all people have and a right to receive support that facilitates those needs.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that.
Um, and, um, and it's also, um, consistent, well, the the evidence that you give now is consistent with, again, that residential statement that we looked at at the beginning, which describes the house as being your home and says, if you want to have friends, family, stay over, it's to be negotiated with staff. It doesn't in any way discourage intimate relationships.
No, nor should it.
Um, so, um, in those circumstances where, um, you've given evidence that she definitely should have been allowed to have a fiance stay over and you've identified that the, that, that evidence is in accordance with the policies at the time, are you able to give any insight into why you think that decision was not made by this team leader, these, this program operations manager at that particular time? Was it a defect in training, a defect in understanding or something else?
Uh, no, I think, I mean, as my statements are, um, prior to quite quite strong in that, I I'm of the view that uh, people with a disability should be able to have people, um, come to their house and stay over. Um, and whether that be friendships or relationships, that is something that, uh, should be first and foremost, uh, an ab- absolute access to to having. Um, what I can see through the relevant material is there is obviously a grappling with some complexity around that, um, in that, uh, over the period of time in terms of, uh, you know, are people accessing the house, there are other. you know, are people accessing the house, there are other clients um in the house and, you know, and staff. Um and so I I I think I think staff have probably tried to grapple with the complexity that might be that. Um but I stand firm on my statement in that uh we should grapple with that and ultimately ending in a uh response that is somebody can have their people's uh loved ones or friends or partners or explore their relationships that within their home, certainly.
Um so you you speak in you've spoken in your evidence about um the difficulty that staff had in grappling with the those issues. Um. If. Well, perhaps if I jump forward to the present time, um the current policies are set out in your statement at two hundred and twelve.
Yes.
Um and those current policies are more detailed.
Yes.
And there's an even greater recognition of the right to intimacy and the right to support um to engage in intimate relationships.
Yes, within those policies, there there's some very clear statements on um rights and responsibility, dignity of risk, informed choice, and uh that people with a disability have the utmost right to explore uh their sexuality, intimacy and relationships, yes.
So um applying those policies, I think it follows from your earlier answer, applying those policies today. If somebody in Sophie's position wanted to have longstanding boyfriend, fiance, stay over the night, she should absolutely be permitted to have that occur.
Ye- yes, yeah.
Um and what training is available to staff today to ensure that that understanding is not just your understanding as a policy manager, but that it filters down so that people like support workers and team members, uh team leaders are aware of those rights and are in a position to en- ensure that they can be acted on?
Uh from from some specific, there are, you know, training uh for staff around rights and responsibilities um and and that. I I think I'll refer to my um some of my previous statements in this and where I've said, uh you know, the policy here clearly articulates the ability for people, and so it should, um in their uh expression of uh facilitating such relationships. Um. What what I think I've agreed to already in that is that the organisation clearly uh needs to do much more in listening to people with disability um in the design of not just an overarching policy statement um around exploring relationships, intimacy and particularly sexual relationships. Um but that needs to be led by uh and designed by people with a disability in terms of how that happens. Um and it's our job to facilitate that in that way. So um I would I would absolutely say that we've got a lot more work to do in this case.
Um and in relation to ensuring that those kind of overarching statements of principle make their way into practical practice, um would you also agree that it might be helpful in particular for the procedures to contain some more concrete advice, reiterating the evidence that you've given us today, that a longstanding relationship they should be permitted to, a a person with a disability should be permitted to have their loved ones stay over the night?
Yeah, I again, I would agree. I think, you know, at a policy level, that's, you know, that's that's nice to have it as a statement. But we're talking about individuals in terms of how they want to explore it. So so my view is that um i- it's not just a a large policy statement and some general practice. It's actually a very specific tailored um, you know, area in terms of how that person living in that home wants to explore those matters.
Would you consider um uh implementing some training, uh nationwide training, exploring in particular Sophie's case as a case study in um in ensuring that support workers and team leaders and operations managers uh fully understand the um the force with which Life Without Barriers expresses and holds that right?
Yeah, and I'd probably go a step further with that and say uh not only do I see it as, you know, those policy statements and possibly some, you know, generalist training across, you know, we heard from the experts who talked about maybe reimagining the certificate for of disability services to to have some. So I think I think they're all good recommendations, suggestions. I I would take it down to a much more granular level in that every uh individual's way of wanting to express themselves in this area is not a generic thing. And so uh we should be facilitating uh things at an individual nature and therefore training at an individual level of those support workers or those people in that support structure looking after um or supporting, uh sorry, uh supporting that individual and supporting them to their specific plan, not a very generalized thing, but a specific one.
And how does Life Without Barriers propose to go about engaging in that kind of training to un- to ensure that at that individual level, rights are able to be realised?
Yeah, a- and I think, like I said at the beginning of of um uh me today is that uh we are certainly uh undertaking a a piece of work at the moment, which will be um from a research perspective, but also, you know, fundamentally led by um guided by people with disability and how to explore this. Um and naturally out of that uh um comes a number of recommendations in terms of implementation, um training, uh knowledge, um you know, culture, all those kinds of things um would be developed out of out of such a framework like that.
Okay, um and it just we've spoken about staying overnight. I assume that it also follows from the evidence that you've been giving that you acknowledge, or Life Without Barriers acknowledges, that it could have done more to support Sophie generally in the relationship with her fiance.
Uh yes.
Perhaps if I ask it this way, um it tab six of the documents in front of you, um bundle of um documents, tab six and bundle G, tab thirty, um is a written complaint from Sophie. Um she spoke about it in her evidence, where she says um that her complaint is not enough staff for training me as a client for what I need, especially for visiting her fiance. Um she says she's spoken to the um team leader, she's spoken to the manager, she's spoken to people at Reading, she's spoken to staff at the house and is not being able to get any assistance. Um. The next page, which is management of complaint, is entirely empty. Um so firstly, do you agree that after Sophie had gone to the trouble of putting in a written complaint, it should have been responded to in writing?
Oh, absolutely.
Um and secondly, do you agree that this is evidence that apart from the issue of staying overnight, there were other ways in which Life Without Barriers could and should have further supported um Sophie in relation to that that relationship in particular, before moving to other relationships?
Uh yes, I I know that this is talking about especially, no, yes, yeah.
Um now, you've also heard evidence um that uh Sophie broke up with her fiance. Um and I think that happened in around about May of twenty fifteen. And at some stage after she broke up with her fiance, she became began internet dating. Um. And you'd agree that Life Without Barriers staff were aware that she was active on dating apps and that from the beginning, the staff were concerned about the risks?
I would agree that there was conversations with Sophie's support structure, not just her her staff, but in the main everybody, um her day program provider and her family that were concerned about, you know, the potential risk of uh the vulnerability of potentially through cyber um, you know, exploitation, yes.
Yes, um and if I could ask you to turn to tab ten. Uh this is uh bundle G, tab one twenty. It's a risk management plan.
Yes.
I understand that this uh is, according to the the last page, it seems to be um or the second last page date, page five of six, the last entry seems to be the third of February twenty sixteen. But I understand the metadata indicates that it may have been uploaded to um Life Without Barrier Systems sometime later than that, maybe as late as twenty eighteen. Um. The question I wanted to ask you relates to page two of six. Um so this is a risk management plan that's um filled in by Life Without Barrier's staff.
Yes.
And it indicates that under the heading Relationships and Sexuality, At Risk of Exploitation, Unsafe Sex, Behaviours of Concern.
Yes.
Um do you have any idea what the behaviours of concern are that are mentioned there?
Uh. Possibly uh that, you know, I'm aware of some cases where through um discussions with people online, uh that um on on occasion, a couple of individuals may have turned up to the house late at night, ma- male uh turned up late at night, unannounced, um that may be, sorry, that would be.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Do you agree it should have been more detailed? So that we're not speculating about what it meant. Um when we look at um the conditions, um they include, these are the conditions where the risk is indicated. They include increased use on the internet dating sites. When Sophie begins discussing dating, boyfriends, getting married and having children, discussing her intentions of meeting up with a male friend. Um and then under the heading Means of Prevention, we have Encourage Participation in Activities of Interest, Limiting Access to Online and Extended Periods of Time Alone at Home with Parental Assistance, Continued Sex Education, Community Health, Continued Discussions Around Health and Infectious Disease. Um. What I wanted to ask is, would you agree that the conditions and the means of prevention um are entirely focused on risk and contain no acknowledgement that there should be any um factoring in of right to intimacy in that respect?
In the degree that when we review the plan in context with the actions of staff and the clinician uh that was a a a main state clinician for Sophie over a very long period of time, there there is a significant amount of information that refers to very proactive measures uh in sexual education, sexual health, family planning clinic, uh sex ed, cyber safety uh and the like. So I I would say in context with the safety plan, there certainly is uh a number of areas in which staff uh and her support network took to to kind of communicate and explore and educate uh on on all of those matters, yes.
Okay, so you say the ref- the the balancing is to be found in the safety plan?
Uh no, no, sorry, I'm I'm referring to other documents that I've reviewed, yes.
So to answer my question, this risk management plan doesn't have any balancing, any recognition of rights in it, but you say you get that balancing and the recognition of rights from other things that were happening at the time?
Yeah, in the in the in the view that I don't think the safety plan here, oh sorry, the risk mitig- mitigation plan here is to um reduce the rights uh of of the individual, uh being Sophie. Um when read in context with the proactive work uh that that is certainly done, I I think that that strikes a balance.
Okay, well, let's turn to that proactive work, shall we? Um so the Sophie told us about a time when she met a man at a motel and she said that it was a positive experience for her. Um after that, the disability coordinator um sent an email which is extracted in your statement at two one nine. And this is an email um that says the important thing to remember in this and any situation is that Sophie is an adult who is capable of making her own decisions and is entitled to make these decisions. And that staff's role was to support Sophie, provide educational opportunities for Sophie and ensure that Sophie understands the risks associated with the decisions she's making. Um is that the kind of proactive response that you're speaking about in your evidence?
Well, it's part of.
Part of. Um and I take it that um you extracting that email is in indication that you agree that that was an appropriate response to recognise her right to choose and her right to enjoy intimacy?
If I recall this email particularly, there's there's much more in that email, uh if it's the one that I'm that I'm thinking of that goes on to say um regardless of our own views, um we should um acknowledge the rights and responsibilities and and choice of Sophie, and it's our job to ensure that we support her through that, um if it's the email that you're referring to.
Okay, and um and she certainly indicated on a number of occasions that she was very interested in looking for a relationship. Um and if you turn to tab thirty two. That's a sorry, um not tab thirty two, tab seventeen. Oh, that's sorry, tab seventeen is the letter. Um is that the letter that uh the email that you were referring to earlier?
Uh yes.
Um and then if you turn over to tab eighteen, which is uh bundle C, tab two hundred and sixty six. Uh this is a person-centered plan.
Yes.
Uh and at page twelve. Goal five.
Sorry, which page?
Page twelve. Uh down but very bottom of the page. Um goal five, socialise, find a boyfriend and maybe marry one day. Um the measurable objective is contact friends and organise social outings with prompts and information sharing from staff and others. Um if one then goes over the page, um work toward this goal, what progress has been made is not filled in. As far as you're aware, was this document ever reviewed to ensure, to examine whether or not um Life Without Barriers was taking action to help support Sophie in realising that goal?
Um the the way this document works is if you look at the front page.
Yes.
P C P meeting date, and then it's got a number of reviews. So um to my knowledge, in terms of whether the review had taken place, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming that this is the
This is.
This is the first document within that which.
And you're not able to tell us whether you've seen any further ones that indicate whether this goal was followed up or not?
And not from a chronological review that I've done that.
Have you seen any documents from Life Without Barriers that indicated that they were assisting Sophie to contact friends and organise social outings? Or in any way helping her to find an appropriate person to have a relationship with?
And not the, no.
Um do you agree that Life Without Barriers could have done more to support Sophie in that respect?
In finding.
Yeah, in helping her to access parts of the community where she would find a suitable person to engage in an intimate relationship.
Uh yeah, we could, we we certainly could have done more, yes.
Like to now ask you some questions about the relationship goals. Um so they are um tab tab twenty one, um and. And hearing bundle C, tab 366. Okay, so those, this is the interim rules. And they're amended subsequently to add an extra rule. You've become familiar with these rules in preparation for this hearing?
Yeah, I've read the safety plan, yes.
Okay. I'm calling it the relationship rules rather than the safety plan because, as you might, as you're probably aware, Sophie's positive behaviour support plans are also called safety plans. And so in order to distinguish the two, that's why I'm referring to this as the relationship rules. So in relation to these relationship rules, I think you've already mentioned that you heard the evidence of the experts.
Yes.
Jodie Rogers and Liz Dorr.
Yes, I did.
And they criticised a number of aspects of these rules. I just want to take you to some specific criticisms and ask you whether or not you accept those aspects of the criticisms. So firstly, the topic of privacy. Jodie Rogers gave evidence that there are definitely parts of this plan that go against somebody's basic right to privacy in their own home. And I note in that respect again, the residential statement in tab three that says, "Your bedroom is your own personal private area." Do you accept Ms Rogers' criticism of the rules as interfering with Sophie's basic rights of privacy?
Yes.
Secondly, in relation to the notion of home, Liz Dorr gave evidence, "I'm really concerned that someone can't bring a person home because that's what home means, that you can have family over or friends over or someone over for the night." I think you may have already answered this, but I take it you also accept that criticism of these rules?
Yes.
Compatibility, Jodie Rogers gave evidence, "It's actually used Tyler's name, saying that it can't interfere with Tyler's care. That means Sophie's decisions and choices about who can come into that home or who can't come into that home is really now based on risk management of other clients." Do you agree with that criticism?
I think that is starting to bring out some of the complexity in this, yes.
Well, do you agree with the criticism or not?
Oh, no, I do, yes, in terms of other clients within the household and how people coming and going interfere potentially, yes.
Secondly, or fourthly, the definition of intimate action or lack thereof. Sophie gave evidence that she thought it included kissing and cuddling. There's certainly nothing on the face of the document that indicates what intimate action is planned, is supposed to refer to. Jodie Rogers gave evidence, "I'd want to make sure anyone I was working with had a full comprehensive understanding of what any intimate action actually means, because that can be interpreted in a number of different ways." Do you accept that criticism of these rules?
As far as the, a person that did review this plan was Sophie's clinician, who I know had engaged in some regular sex ed and conversations and a programme around that. So if Sophie was, and as her evidence, unaware of what, you know, that meant, then yes, inappropriate, but the people who developed the plan were ones that were working closely with Sophie. So in the context of Sophie not understanding, you know, making a statement to say that, then yes, that would be inappropriate.
Okay, and even if Sophie did understand what was meant by it, there are staff members who are coming in and out of this home who are required to enforce this plan. And so uncertainties in the plan are deficient from that respect too, would you agree?
Potentially, but what I would also say again is that we're talking about individuals that were longstanding individuals working with Sophie, who knew Sophie, and had engaged in those conversations with her quite regularly. So I can't speculate if the term intimate action was something that someone knew or not. I'm just making the reference that the people that developed this, making an assumption that everybody knew what that meant.
But the other criticisms that we've gone through, you accept each of those?
Yes.
Okay. Then in relation to choice, the evidence was when young people are living together, they have a choice of who they're going to live with. They choose to live with people who have common interests in them, they're similar, those choices are not made for them. Now, you heard Sophie give evidence that she agreed to follow the rules, not that she agreed with the rules, in the sense that she fundamentally objected to their failure to recognise her maturity. And in fact, they're inconsistent with the preamble, which says, "This is her home and she would like to meet people on her own turf." So given that, do you also accept the criticism of the experts that these decisions should not have been made unilaterally over Sophie's choice?
I accept that, two things here. One is, my understanding of the way that these were developed was in consultation with Sophie's support structures and people, and also family. And then that had been viewed there, and then meeting with Sophie. My view on that is that Sophie should have been the first person that a conversation such as, if this was appropriate, to engage with, not the last. And by virtue of that, that by, you know, LWB developing these, meeting with the family, and then with Sophie, I think that process is wrong. And it certainly doesn't cater for the voice of Sophie at the very forefront of any development of any plan. And so it's my fundamental belief that she should have been consulted first on development of this, not last, and then determine whether it's appropriate or not.
And if in fact she didn't agree with them, then in view of the criticisms that you've already accepted, these rules would not have been appropriate.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And then finally, and ultimately, in relation to the notion of risk, Jodie Rogers gave evidence. But the other thing is that when we ask someone, somebody to take this off site, we're actually forcing them into something that may be more unsafe. Do you accept that criticism?
Yeah, I accept that that we certainly should have done more in the provisions of that engagement externally, yes.
Perhaps if I unpack that a little bit more, as I understand your evidence, you have accepted that a person in Sophie's position should be able to engage in sexual intercourse within their own home, even when it's a group home?
Yes.
So by directing Sophie that if intimate action is planned, it must be off the premises, then that rule has effectively forced Sophie into something that may be, in Jodie Rogers' words, more unsafe?
Yes.
And so do you agree that that aspect of the rules effectively outsourced the risk to Sophie?
Not sure what.
Yeah, I withdraw the question, thank you Chair.
Mr Dolly? Mr Dolly, do you know whether any similar safety plans were enforced at any time prior to your arrival in your position in 2018 at LWB?
No, I do not, Chair.
Sorry?
No, I do not, I don't believe there were.
You don't believe there were?
Yeah, and to my knowledge, no.
Nothing after. This is entirely unique to Sophie.
Potential, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And is that, is your answer based on inquiries or just you haven't heard of it in such place?
I haven't heard of it, so sorry. I've not inquired through reviewing the term.
Can I ask you a question, please, about the document that appears at tab 85? If that's the document, NDIS-LWB, Independence and Informed Choice Procedure, I think this paper asked you about this. It bears a date of last review, the first page of 18 January 2018, which is some months before your arrival. Do you know what caused this document to be prepared? Tab 85 in the list nine, volume two of the policies.
And can you indicate for the record that that is lwb dot triple zero seven dot triple zero one dot six one one two, which is found in bundle C, tab 31?
I assume Mr Dolly's got the same.
He has the same.
As I. So have you found that at tab 85?
Yes.
I'm asking, what was in effect the provenance of this document? How come LWB decided to produce this document?
Well, looking at the date, and given how close that is to the transitional rollout of the NDIS, it would be my view that a document such as this, given the language of Independence Informed Choice, is probably coinciding with the rollout of the NDIS.
I'm sure it did, but I'm wondering how, if you don't know, you don't know, that's fine. But I'm wondering whether this, for example, was this document, does it reflect guidance given by the NDIS? Or was it a document produced as a result of an initiative within LWB? If you don't know, you don't know.
No, sorry.
All right, Ms Robbs may be able to help. Thank you.
Mr Dolly, in relation to those policies which you've spoken about and which are in your statement and which are contained tab 85 and following, is it the case that those policies also indicate, and perhaps if I take you to the policy, so tab 85 and page seven, final dot point on the page. One of the things that LWB is undertaking to assist clients with is supporting staff regarding issues of consent, including educating clients, carers, to understand once a person turns 16 plus years, in most cases, their parents or guardians only have a limited say in who the person chooses to have a relationship with. Can you see that?
Yes.
And that's a theme which is found both in the policy and also in the procedure. This concern about a potential conflict of interest by going to family members, particularly parents, in seeking guidance about what to do in facilitating sexual relationships.
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, well, perhaps if I ask it in a different way. Sophie's father was involved both in the making of the plan and also features in the plan. Particularly in terms of the making of the plan, do you accept that there are some difficulties there in approaching a client's father about how their rights to engage in sexual activities should be realised?
In this specific case that we're talking about, Sophie's family was extremely engaged in not just the direction of her life, but subsets of that. And so also noting that within some of the documentation, Sophie refers to wanting her parents to know certain elements. So I would think that there are elements of this where, given the involvement of the family and consent from Sophie, that, you know, it may be appropriate to have open discussions with family about such things.
But it needs.
Or may not if the individual does not give consent.
And certainly even when consent is given, it needs to be done very sensitively, accepting as Sophie's father gave evidence, that it's a very difficult thing for a father to have to make decisions about when and how his daughter is to exercise the right to engage in sexual relationships.
I think, you know, therein lies a large amount of the complexity. You saw was very raw from Sophie's father in testimony that he gave, I thought was very powerful. In the difficulty there in freedom of expression and choice and independence, as well as trying to ensure that their loved one is safe, I thought was, you know, an extremely powerful sentiment in terms of the complexity that we're dealing with here, yes.
And that's why Life Without Barriers has to be particularly careful in this kind of area. But even when parents and guardians are consulted, it needs to be borne in mind that these are very difficult, complex questions for them to be able to provide support, in contrast to some of the other aspects of Sophie's life, which are not quite so complex and don't involve those difficult issues.
Certainly, certainly, yes.
You've accepted a number of the criticisms about this interim plan. You understand that there was also a final plan which extended those rules and added another rule that Sophie couldn't see any visitors after 6pm?
Yes.
And I assume you accept the criticisms of that rule as well?
Yes.
Prior to this Royal Commission, has Life Without Barriers conducted any review, any consideration of the appropriateness of these relationship rules?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Can I take you to tab 32 of your mini bundle, which is hearing bundle G, tab 266? If I could ask you to turn to page three of that document? This is an email dated 3 November 2017 from the then regional manager to the disability support coordinator. In that email, the regional manager asks a number of questions about this particular, these relationship rules. Have you seen this email before?
Yes, I have.
You have?
Yes.
Did you annex it to your statement?
I've seen this following my.
Okay, following your statement. Are you aware of whether this email was ever answered by anyone?
No, no.
It wasn't answered?
No, I'm not aware.
You're not aware? Have you looked to see whether or not it was answered?
No, I have not.
Okay, we might take that up with Ms Robbs tomorrow. So the regional manager raises a number of concerns. One I'd just like to ask you about right now. She says, point seven and eight of the plan. So. Oh, yeah, so if you need to refer to the final plan, it's at tab 27. But basically, rules seven and eight are, the rule about intimate meetings being planned must be off premises. And if at any point the staff feels she's at risk, they're to call management and Sophie's mum or dad. So this regional manager asks, "Point seven and eight appear to be more about staff safety than Sophie's and could also be seen as restrictive practices." Have you given any consideration as to whether those rules could constitute a restrictive practice either at that time or now?
Point seven and eight of the plan?
Yeah. I know the regional manager is raising. I know the regional manager is raising the question. These points seem to be more about staff safety and they could be seen as a restricted, restrictive practice. Have you given any consideration as to whether those rules were a restrictive practice?
No, I have not.
Okay, do you accept that they could potentially be a restrictive practice?
I think point eight refers to, they feel Sophie is unsafe to contact on call.
Yeah.
And mum and dad as well, so I.
So maybe not that one, but what about point seven?
I think point seven.
So are you asking Mr. Dolly whether he's given consideration?
I asked him whether.
Whether this is a, this could be a restrictive practice? Or are you asking his opinion as to whether it was a restrictive practice?
I began by asking him if he'd ever given consideration to it. And I understood the answer to be that he hadn't given consideration to it. And I'm now asking him whether, sitting here today, he thinks that it could be a restrictive practice.
How will that help?
If that doesn't assist, I'm happy to move. My final question on the relationship rules, Mr. Dolly. The regional manager asks whether the safety plan was incorporated into the positive behaviour support plan. That's the final point. And do you agree that it was not incorporated into her positive behaviour support plan?
No, and I'm. As you put the question to me, I'm wondering whether it should or shouldn't be incorporated into her positive behaviour support plan. That's, that's something that I'd have to think, I'd have to think about that, yeah.
So to your knowledge, it wasn't included and your uncertainty is whether or not it should have been?
Yeah, I certainly, I don't think it has and whether it's appropriate to be in a behaviour support plan at all.
Okay. That's all I wish to ask you about the relationship rules. The next topic I wish to ask you about was sex education. Now, you heard Sophie give evidence that she would like to have received more sex education?
Yes.
And in your statement, you speak about the sex education that Sophie did in fact receive.
Yes.
And in particular, paragraph two hundred and twenty-three of your statement, you say. You make reference in the third line to an email where the team leader noted that Life Without Barriers had previously conducted several months of sex education.
Yes.
Firstly, in your review of the documents, have you come across any documents that indicate when that sex education was conducted, who it was conducted by, and what it covered?
Yes, I have.
And where do we find that in your statement?
It, it may not be in my statement, but it's certainly in the bundle of information that is to review.
Okay, well, we might come back to either you or to Ms. Robbs on where we find the particulars of that. You also, at paragraph two hundred and twenty-two, reference in an email which indicates that sex education was conducted by Red Ink. Have you come across any documentation that indicates whether Life Without Barriers sought any information from Red Ink as to what was covered in that training?
There's some substantial meetings between Life Without Barriers and Red Ink in regards to, and her family in regards to Sophie and the, the work being done with Sophie.
That's, that's not my question, my question is, have, is there any indication in the material provided, the documentation of Life Without Barriers as to what was covered in that sex education?
Other than that it was done.
Other than that it was done, no.
Not that I can't see any form of documentation that outlines the, the programme that they went through, no.
Okay. And as far as you can tell, did Life Without Barriers ever send those relationship rules to Red Ink?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you agree that Life Without Barriers could and should have worked more closely with Red Ink in relation to sex education, both in terms of sending them important documents like the relationship rules to let them know what Life Without Barriers was doing on your side, but also inquired more of Red Ink to ensure that the sex education that they were providing was on topic and that it could be reinforced in the home?
No, I think the relationship, as I've said, between Life Without Barriers and the day programme was very open, was very honest. And there was a lot of information sharing that related to Sophie and what was taking place in her life or, or things that we were working on. So as far as the actual documentation of a programme, I can't see if that has occurred in terms of. But I can see that at almost every meeting with family and at every meeting, there was an I P or we're talking about Sophie, the day programme was, was there. So, you know, yes, there was a lot of sharing of information.
Sharing of information, but in terms of understanding what they were covering in the sex ed, there's no documentation that indicates that Life Without Barriers had any idea about the extent of the sex education that was being covered?
Well, again, I think I refer to my previous answer, as far as there's obviously meeting minutes that say that Red Ink is providing sexual education for Sophie. That's documented in the, in there that that's actually been provided, so.
But in terms of the quality of that sex ed, you've heard Sophie's evidence that it was largely cyber, cyber education, don't, don't put your phone number on a social media device and very little, if any, about how to have a safe, respectful relationship.
I, I think the material that I've read would, would show a difference of the, the sexual education that's been provided, not just in a general nature, but also very specific in terms of some of the appointments with the sexual health clinic and the family planning clinic that Sophie attended to in terms of practising safe sex, making sure that she was safe. There's references there to adequately putting on condoms. And, you know, it's very detailed in terms of some of the work that was.
No doubt you'll be able to provide the documentation that demonstrates that. It's very difficult for us, I think, to deal with your recollection of what may be in documents. So the best thing to do is to produce them and we'll see what they contain. So that might be arranged through the Office of Solicitor Assistant.
Yes, we can provide that.
Thank you, Chair. You also set out in your statement, a training that workers had in the Lismore houses during the relevant period, which would enable them to properly support Sophie.
Sorry, what page?
So this is paragraph two hundred and thirty. And if I can just go through each one, the first, right now you are addressing the training that Life Without Barriers provided in particular to workers to assist in their support of Sophie during this period of time.
Yes.
And so you, you identify four sub paragraphs. The first is dated twenty five February twenty sixteen. And it's a course responding to sexual assault training. And you tell us that the staff at the Gunellaba House were encouraged to attend. Do we take it that that wasn't mandatory?
No, I don't believe it was mandatory.
Okay, and you can't tell us who attended that?
No.
And based on the title, responding to sexual assault training, it wouldn't appear to be about facilitating safe relationships.
No, it's a very specific train, yes.
And then we have an email sent by the programme coordinator. That's the email that we've spoken about earlier. And it says that more detailed conversations should be referred to a sexual health clinic or other sex education contacts provided to their team leader. Then there's two other documents. One, November twenty sixteen, email guidance was provided by, provided to the regional operations manager by the practice leader in relation to problem sexualised behaviours. And you've helpfully given us references to that email, which I think you can see at tab nineteen. Would you agree that just move on? That what we're dealing with? Actually, I'll, I'll move on to the next one. You've said relevant resources were distributed. And that document can be found at tab, tab twelve. Tab twelve is actually, I think, the document I was looking for earlier.
Miss Baker, is the point that none of these documents provide instruction in communicating about intimate sexual relationships? Is that the point?
That is the point, Chair.
I'm sure, I'm sure that Mr. Dolly will agree that none of these documents addresses those issues. Do you agree?
Are they specific documents that are referring to the, the, the Adeccoke policy guideline? No.
All right, we can move on, I think, to the next topic.
The next question I wish to ask you about, just to continue dealing with Sophie, late to the period of time after her sexual assault.
Yes.
Now, whether those relationship rules were justified or not, regardless of the criticisms that are made about them, it's the case that Sophie was sexually assaulted after she left the house in accordance with those rules. Do you agree?
Sophie was sexually assaulted, yes, outside of the home.
Yes, and after having left because she was told that nobody could come in.
Sophie. Yes, Sophie did leave the house, yes.
She left the house after being reminded that it was nine P M and the rules did not permit her to have people in her home after nine, after six P M.
My understanding is that Sophie had discussed with her staff that she wanted, was going to meet an individual who was going to pick her up from the house. Staff went through the appropriate process with her in terms of being safe, contacted family. And, and it was everyone's indication that, that that was to go and have a meal, yes.
She was sexually assaulted after she left the house in the context where rules did not permit her to have male friends or any friends into the home after six P M. In those circumstances, do you agree that there should have been an internal review which considered the appropriateness of those rules at that time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Did you want to add?
I was going to add that when you refer to a review, I think what I can see is subsequent after the sexual assault, there was an immediate meeting that took place with, you know, Sophie's family and her day programme and Life Without Barriers to, to, to review a, a number of things.
Should upper levels of management have been informed both of the rules and of the sexual assault?
Yes.
And I think you say that when you came into the position, you had no knowledge of this sexual assault when you came into the position as state director?
No, I mean, I, I came in at, yeah, a much relevant later period, so no, I did not have knowledge of this.
And to your knowledge, based on your review of the documents, did your predecessor have any knowledge of this event?
Possibly, I, I can't.
Based on your review of the documents?
No, I can't, I can't.
Based on your.
I'm, I'm not sure, sorry.
Okay. You tell us at paragraph two hundred and thirty-eight, that Life Without Barriers has not located any reference to the sexual assault on Sophie in any board or executive committee papers and minutes. You say it's not possible to confirm whether any verbal reports were made. Would you accept that this is a matter that should have been brought to the attention of the board?
As, as far as the, you know, to comment on the, the, the Life Without Barriers board and relationship in terms of board and C E O, I'm not, I'm not a part of the executive team, so I can't.
Fair enough. I can't comment on that. I don't see how Mr. Dolly can tell us what should have been communicated to the board. Ms. Robbs may well be able to tell us about that. But we have to bear in mind that Mr. Dolly only comes into this in late two thousand and eighteen, and many of the documents will speak for themselves. So I'm not sure that it takes us very much further to get Mr. Dolly's opinion on certainly what he can say, what should have happened in accordance with his understanding of proper procedures. But as to dealings with the board and so forth, that is something that does not necessarily seem to come within his problems.
And then just finally, in relation to the response to the sexual assault, you've heard evidence from Sophie and her parents that the staff were very cold and provided very little support. In fact, they were blamed for the additional cost of security cameras. Do you agree that more should have been done to support Sophie and her parents in the aftermath of the sexual assault?
Yeah, look, I certainly heard, I think it was Sophie's mother's account of the, a meeting subsequent there that, that took place. And, and, and if that meeting took place the way it did, that is entirely inappropriate response nor should be, be communicating any issues such as financials around cameras being installed, particularly given, you know, such a, such a critical event. In terms of, so, so that, my, my, my view on that is that if that, that took place, that's not appropriate. In terms of support given, yes, we, we could have done better in terms of the family. I think you can see through the documentation Sophie engaging in a significant amount of counselling with a provider over a relevant period of time until Sophie actually decided after a number of sessions that that, she didn't want that to continue.
So when you say a provider, a provider arranged by Life Without Barriers?
Indigo House, I believe, is the.
And was that arranged by Life Without Barriers or by the D P P?
Uh, I believe it was by, uh, Life Without Barriers.
Okay, we might double check that, um. But in terms of general support, um, would it also be, have been of assistance to bring in a counsellor to give, um, further advice to the staff to assist them in assisting Sophie?
Uh, yes.
Um, and in particular, you heard Sophie say that the staff didn't tell her who she could have, who she was allowed to speak to about the social, sexual assault. And that communication was definitely lacking.
Is that, we, we should have been able to communicate with Sophie around, um, a, a, around who and, and, and in what cases, uh, if any, uh, staff could not engage in conversation around that due to some legal proceedings, yes.
Um, so more involvement of upper level management in helping to, um, guide the staff members who were themselves stressed at the time, might have, would have been of assistance then.
Well, look, I think, uh, immediately after, um, the, the response from that incident, you can see, uh, uh, management bringing those staff cohort together in a kind of debrief conversation and also looking at appropriate actions moving forward. Um, so there's certainly some, some proactive strategy there, um, and you can see things implemented around some of their concerns that they had. Um, and subsequently, you can see the cameras being put in, you know, and duress alarms and, and the like, and also, um, looking at the, the on-call response and making sure that that was more appropriate and people could, could be there when they needed them for it. Um, in, in terms of kind of ongoing, possibly E A P or counselling or guidance, yes, we.
Well, and in particular guidance about how to support Sophie.
Hmm.
Because as you've accepted, one of the things which nobody thought of was who is somebody that Sophie can go to when she's feeling stressed and confused about what has just happened to her, and there was clear communication deficit in that respect.
Uh, yes, uh, you're agreed that no one specifically I can say, that I can see sat down, and I know Sophie had a key worker, um, who on a number of her, uh, um, occasions that went through, um, you know, and, and she made reference to her um, first sexual, sexual encounter and the positive experience of that, you can see uh, staff within that experience and or this one, uh, engaging with Sophie on such a very empathetic uh, and kind of educative response, um, which then results in some subsequent action from those events, so. Um, there was certainly longstanding staff there, um, that, that, that had provided some very proactive response. Um, but I will take, um, to the point that, uh, you know, Sophie made the, the comment, um, you know, she wasn't sure who to go to, so we should have communicated.
That, that was a clear deficit in that respect.
We should have communicated, yes.
Miss Baker, I see we're now at, uh, two fifty.
Yes.
Um, are you planning to pursue the issues associated with Natalie?
Uh, yes, they will be considerably shorter.
All right, now, um, the, the timetable provided us for us to take a break in the afternoon, are you still planning on doing that?
I don't need a break unless the.
Do you need a break?
Uh, no, no, no.
In that case, let us, uh, continue. Unless one of the commissioners calls out and demands a break for a few minutes, in which case we will.
Um, I can very briefly finish.
In the absence of such a call, we shall continue.
Um, I can very briefly finish, um.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, to interrupt. Um, it's Ms. Mitchell Moore for Life Without Barriers. I just wonder whether Mr. Dolly might be able to get some more water? He appears to be out of water.
There is, there, there is actually a very large container with water which he is now putting into his glass.
I'm, I'm grateful, thank you, Chair.
We don't want anybody to.
Thank you.
I've had enough experience myself for that. Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Dolly, the last thing I want to ask you about in relation to Sophie is the March, um, twenty-nine incident. Um, that's, um, the incident on the twenty-third of March involving Sophie and two support workers. It's after Sophie's return from court. So a support worker ignores Sophie, a verbal argument with the support worker ensues. The support worker then pushes Sophie and Sophie is then shut in the laundry. Um, there's an investigation which leads to an investigation report dated July twenty nineteen. Um, and that investigation report, um, finds none of the allegations um, made against the support workers to be substantiated. Now, um, you heard the cross-examination or the examination of Samantha Taylor from the N D I S um, on Wednesday of last week, and the criticisms that were made of that investigation uh, which Ms. Taylor accepted. Um, do you agree with those criticisms?
Yes.
And can you just tell us, um, what aspects of that report you, um, feel were inadequate?
Uh, the, well, for starters, I think the, um, the, the allegation that uh, Sophie, uh, was pushed, uh, by a worker, um, in, in reading some of the transcripts of that, uh, investigation report. Um, not only was that, uh, referenced by Sophie herself and when interviewed, um, uh, it appears that the, the worker had also, uh, admitted to, to that taking place. Um, and, uh, so, you know, by virtue of that, I think the, the allegation of, you know, did, did that occur should have been substantiated, yes.
Um, and, uh, you are also aware, if I could get you to turn to tab forty-two, which is, um, bundle G, tab four. Uh, this is a, um, a separate document to the, um, to the investigations report. It's entitled operational and systematic issues identified during the investigation. Um, can you tell me why this forms a separate document to the final investigation document?
I, I believe, uh, a document such as this is conducted and goes to, uh, with the investigation report, uh, goes to a, sorry, um, uh, goes to what they call an outcomes meeting, um, and provides, you know, further understanding of uh, the, the, the investigation or incident.
Um, and in that operational and systemic issues document, a number of criticisms are made. Um, in particular on page one, we have criticisms about, um, reporting to police, uh, transition to an alternative accommodation, um, plan. Then on page two, criticisms about the worker responding in an inappropriate manner that was not consistent with Sophie's positive behaviour support plan. Um, also a lack of training. L W B worker two not having any training since becoming an employee. Um, and then finally, um, rostering issues at the bottom of that page. Um, do you agree with each of those criticisms?
Oh, I've got no reason not to, yes.
Okay, and have you?
Does it really matter? I mean, the doc, the document tells us what Life Without Barriers internally thinks.
Just foundation from the next question, which is, um, have you considered, or have you taken any review to determine whether each of those deficiencies, um, has been addressed? Um, for example, has anybody spoken to, um, the worker who did not comply with Sophie's positive behaviour support plan to identify why she didn't comply with that plan? And to provide her with further training on that issue?
I believe that from review of the material over this time, uh, and, uh, reviewing of that investigation report and particularly some of the uh, recommendations and substantiation or unsubstantiation of that. Um, there, there is a view, um, that, and, and conversations have and, and will, will happen uh, post, uh, this hearing in terms of, um, you know, further training and counselling and conversations with, uh, those particular staff, yes.
Okay, and all that's gonna happen after the commission. To, to your knowledge, to take, for example, the issue of the worker not complying with the positive behaviour support plan. Prior to this commission starting, there had been no, um, action taken to, um, ensure that she understands and is able to comply with positive behaviour support plans in the future.
Uh, so two things, one, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it's appropriate to engage in uh, relevant conversations, uh, with a staff member about a nature that we're talking about now until post. Um, and, and that's some advice that we've received. Um, and yes, that will take place. The, the other one I will say is that, uh, in the particular staff member that we're talking about uh, has a very longstanding history of, uh, working, uh, positively with, uh, with Sophie in terms of her behaviour support plan. Um, and, and I guess one thing I will say is that a, a behaviour support plan is something.
Let, 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 let's confine ourselves, I think, to ask, to answering questions that Miss Baker is asking if she wants to ask you about that time.
Um, no, all I, all I wish to inquire was, has anybody spoken to her? And as I understand it, your answer is to date, no. But after the commission.
No, today, there, there has been, uh, some brief conversations, but yes.
Um, Commissioner, so those are all the questions I wish to ask about Sophie's case.
Well, I'll ask Commissioner Gal, Galbally first, whether you have any questions you wish to put arising out of the evidence concerning Sophie's case.
Um, thank you. Now, the, perhaps the only question would be, um, that I noticed that you said that you thought Sophie should have been, um, consulted first, um, about the interim safety plan and indeed the final safety plan. And my question is if she had disagreed, which she said she did, would that have changed it? Should it have changed it? She should be asked first, but would it have made any difference? Should it have made any difference?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, um, uh, it's, it's my view that, uh, consulted first. Um, and if there was not an agreement with that, that that plan would not have been in place the, the way it was, yes. It should have ultimately changed, uh, the, the way that that safety plan was developed, um, and or elements of that safety plan, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKeer?
Uh, yes, one question for me, Mr. Dolly. I'll take you to tab, uh, thirteen of that first volume, Sophie's Person-Centered Plan. And can I take you to page ten? Are you almost there? Page ten of that document. And at the top, she expressed an interest or an objective of looking for a book club to join. Page ten, tab eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
Oh, eighteen, sorry, sorry, I was, sorry, my, uh, I wouldn't care, but tab eighteen, page ten of that, that document, goal four.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner, for the purposes of the transcript, that's bundle C.
Oh, my apologies, I'll forge.
Thank you, um, that, that was all.
Page ten, yeah, page ten. Goal four. Uh, in, she might interest in drama, dance, theatre and reading, and then the objective is look for a book club to join. So that's my first part, and the second part is at, uh, tab thirty-nine, and I'll ask council if they can be specific about where that is. The tab thirty-nine, the official community visitee report.
Oh, and that is. Um, that is, um, bundle J, tab three thirty.
Mr. Dolly, up in that report and the issue details, Sophie mentioned she would be interested in writing classes or classes where she can develop, develop writing skills. So my question is, do you know if that was ever followed up? Would she ever supported to join a book club? Do writing classes, and we heard last week that she had a great interest in reading and writing. Do you know if that was ever followed up?
It, I, I, I certainly know, um, Commissioner, that there was, Sophie was engaged in a number of groups um, and activities, uh, in terms of the specific reference here and reference into the, the I P plan. I'm not sure if it relates specific to that, but in general, I can see that Sophie was engaged in a number of extracurricular activities to help explore.
But you don't know specifically if that, okay, perhaps take that on note too.
Yes.
However, hypothetically, you've said constantly that you should have done better, you should have done better in many things. Do you agree that she should have been supported to pursue this actively?
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Dolly, since you started, uh, late two thousand and eighteen, I think, until now, what is the turnover of residents, uh, in, uh, accommodation provided by Life Without Barriers in New South Wales? I think you told us that there are a hundred and thirty-eight group homes run by Life Without Barriers. I assume you mean now as of today.
Yes.
But over the last three years, I imagine that the numbers might have fluctuated. What sort of turnover was there in residents?
Residents or staff, so?
Residents. If you don't know.
I would say very little.
If you don't know, that's fine. Are there records that show how many residents might have left group homes and others came in?
Yeah, there certainly would be.
And that could be provided to you. That goes to the question of how often you need to put into practice a procedural policy uh, to consult with existing residents when someone comes in that is new.
Yes.
All right, well, we might get that, uh, by way of some further information. Can you tell us, please, you've explained some of the deficiencies in the provision of, uh, education in intimate personal relationships as far as Sophie was concerned. What happens now as far as Life Without Barriers is concerned if there were to be a resident similar to Sophie? Obviously, everybody is, uh, different and there won't be anybody in an identical position, but somebody perhaps in a similar position to Sophie. What does L W B do?
Uh, I think, um, to, to my, to my point, uh, there's, there's a fair bit of work to be done in this space, um, to, to the question, Chair. Uh, I think training in terms of rights and responsibilities, um, I P plans, uh, and, and further exploring uh, what that looks like for an individual at a, at a, an individual level, um, would be something that we would do. Um, in terms of, uh, further measures, uh, you know, we, like I said, we've got some work to do on this, Chair.
So do I take it from that answer that not a lot has changed, but you hope it will change?
Yes.
All right, thank you, um. Paragraph two hundred and ninety-two in your statement refers to a notification to the insurer. Have you seen a document that explains why the insurer was notified about, uh, the event? Oh, that's Natalie. All right, okay, I'll postpone that. Thank you, I'll postpone that until, uh, uh, Miss Baker deals with, uh, Natalie. And my final question, the document that I've referred to previously at tab eighty-five and its successor at tab eighty-six. In each case, there is a heading, who should read this document? And it says, first page of the first document, this procedure applies to all Life Without Barriers employees, contractors, volunteers and carers. Who actually gets to see this document?
Uh, this, this document would sit, sorry, tab eighty-five?
Yes.
Uh, this document would sit on our policy centre and, and everybody in Life Without Barriers would have access to that policy centre.
Does anybody outside Life Without Barriers see this?
Uh, to the point of contractors, yes, I believe they, they would, they would.
Who's a contractor for this purpose?
Uh. Yeah, contractor, contracted staff, uh, so agency staff. Um, I'm, I'm a fear, I'm a risk, assuming this refers to agency staff.
Right, but it would, a parent or guardian of a resident would not necessarily see this document?
Uh, no, no, possibly not, no.
And nobody who was wanting to look at how Life Without Barriers operates or what its values are? I understand there'll be other material, but they wouldn't be able to see the contents of this document so as to inform themselves as to how Life Without Barriers goes about dealing with such issues.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Well, Miss Sally, I'm now going to turn to some questions about, um, Natalie, um. Before I do so, I should. Well, Miss Dolly, I'm now going to turn to some questions about um Natalie. Um, before I do so, I should um. Just signal for the benefit of the audience who may be watching online, um a matter that I should have it earlier. Um, as with Sophie, this does um concern sexual and indecent um assault allegations. And so for that reason, a content warning slide might be appropriate. Um. Now. Mr. Dolly, you speak about um the conduct of Worker Three toward Natalie. In your statement at paragraphs two eighty-four and following. Um, and at paragraph two eighty-five, you set out the various um. Reviews, referrals that were made um following the report on the sixth of February two thousand and fifteen.
Yes.
Um, now, just at the outset, I take it. It is common ground that there is no question that Worker Three's actions toward Natalie were completely unacceptable.
Uh, absolutely.
Um, and. Life Without Barriers found that the supervisor's failures to um respond and report. Uh, appropriately those matters at an earlier stage constituted a contravention of relevant Life Without Barriers policies and procedures at the time.
Uh, yes, which I think we referred to in previous an investigation with supervisor in a group.
Um, so I'd just like to now um. Ask you about an internal review that you speak about at um. Point F. Um, so. This is your statement, two eighty-five, subparaphrase F. You refer to an internal review being conducted um on the nineteenth of August two thousand and fifteen.
Yes.
And that was in view of issues raised by um New South Wales Police. Um, in an email that was dated the fifth of August two thousand and fifteen.
Yes.
Um, and the purpose of that internal review was to determine. Whether anything could have been done to prevent Worker Three's conduct. And also to see if any further action needed to be taken in relation to any employees.
Yes.
Um, and do you say in two eighty-five F. That uh the internal review report made the following preliminary recommendations. Firstly, referral of preliminary findings um to the state human resource manager. Um, and. For investigation of local management conduct and decision making. So that in effect led to the um investigation reports in relation to the supervisor and. The um and and the program manager.
Yes.
About their failure to respond or appro- or um reported at an earlier point in time.
Yes.
Um, then the other thing that was identified by the internal review report was professional development.
Yes.
Um, and in particular, training for staff and management in relation to professional boundaries, abuse and neglect. Documentation and anything else arising.
Yes.
Uh, and then at paragraph two eighty-five H um of your. Um, statement, you indicate the training that was provided following that recommendation.
Yes.
Um, and the training that was provided at um, Roman numeral one, we had the incident report training.
Yes.
And Roman numeral two, we have external training about responding to sexual assault.
Yes.
Roman numeral three, we have vicarious trauma training.
Yes.
Um, and that takes us up to twenty eighteen.
Yes.
Um, so is it the case that up until twenty twenty, no staff member in the Lismore House, whether. At an operations level or at the house level, had done any additional training on professional boundaries or preventing abuse and neglect?
Yes.
Um, and do you agree that a lack of understanding about professional boundaries was a critical. Component of what happened on this occasion? There was a lack of understanding, not just by Worker Three, but also by other staff members who seemed unclear about what to do. And by management who did not recognise it as a contravention of professional boundaries and raising risk of issues of abuse.
Uh, I I'm not prepared to state that the actions of LW Worker Three. Um, were in regards to not understanding professional boundaries, no.
Okay, but the the other, the other aspects of um that situation, certainly. The response of other staff members, the response of the team leader, the response of the operations manager. Each of their responses indicated a lack of understanding about professional boundaries and understanding risk of abuse.
Uh, uh, no, and again, uh, my my reason for this is uh LWB. Which, sorry, the 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 manager, um.
Let's call, let's let's call the operations manager and the program coordinator, they're the phrases used.
Um, uh, from from my understanding, uh, were. Had been in the sector for quite some period of time and and had knowledge around professional boundaries, and so I'm not prepared to concede that that they did not know.
Okay, well, put it a different way, the internal review report considered that it was necessary. For staff and management to be trained in respect of professional boundaries, abuse and neglect.
Yes.
Um, that was in twenty fifteen. Yes, and as of the beginning of twenty twenty, nobody had received that training.
Yes.
Do you agree that?
Miss Baker, sorry to interrupt, but in that paragraph G, there's a cross-reference in the third line as described in certain paragraphs. What's what's that a reference? Paragraphs eight nine one five four and eight nine one six four above.
Um.
Because I know there's an earlier, I remember an earlier reference in this statement to. The findings against the operations manager and the program coordinator. I presume that's intended to be a cross-reference, but it does not appear to be correct.
Perhaps Mr. Dolly can confirm that that should be a cross-reference?
Well, maybe the Office of Solicitor assisting will be able to do that more readily.
Sorry. Um, well, we can make those inquiries with Mr. Dolly's.
Don't have to make inquiry, just someone tell us what the paragraph.
We can. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um. Uh, so do you agree that they should have received that training well before twenty twenty?
Oh, yes, yes.
Um, and then if we look at the twenty twenty training, you say that from March twenty twenty. Staff working at the Lismore Houses had access to Understanding Abuse Zero Tolerance N D S Training Module. Um, does had access to mean that we should assume that that was not mandatory training?
Uh. Sorry, which training you refer to?
Uh, so in your um statement, H, Roman numeral four. You speak about staff working at the Lismore Houses having access to training.
Uh, yes, yes, they did have access.
Yeah, does that mean that it was mandatory? Or does that mean it was up to them to look at it if and when they saw fit?
Uh, no, I I believe that that one's mandatory.
Okay, can you maybe make some inquiries about whether that is mandatory?
Yes.
And if so, what dates though the the staff working in the Lismore House completed that training?
Yes.
Um.
Uh, just so I can answer my question, the uh issues are dealt with at paragraphs one hundred and fifty-four of the statement through to. One hundred and sixty-four on pages forty-eight to forty-nine. Those pages tell us what the allegations were against the two people who are referred to at that subparaphrase G.
Thank you, Chair. Um. Chair, I was going to ask Mr. Dolly at this point about um the uh. Knowledge of upper management, in particular, relevant committees and boards of this. Um, these events, but it might be more appropriate for those questions to be addressed to Ms. Robbs.
I think that's correct.
Before we move on to, I presume you're about to move on to another topic, I have one question about training. Uh, Mr. Dolly, how do you measure outcome of the training that you deliver or you expect the staff to do? How do you know that they've learned from the training and that they've actively practised what they are supposed to have learnt in that training? How do you measure that?
Uh, yes, thanks, Commissioner. The the training itself, um, once delivered and company-based assessment is is um on that. We can then see uh a kind of an uplift in, um, I'll use a specific example, sorry. Um, so something like incident management training. Um, and once that training is, tends to be delivered at a specific area. Um, we will see an uplift in performance in terms of incidents logged onto a system. Um, and quality of the incidents being logged uh on that system. So that is how we would then measure whether that training is uh um doing what it's meant to be doing, yes.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Dolly, I'd like to now um turn to. The issue of uh personal care policies in relation to Natalie. Um, now, the incidents involving Worker Three each occurred in the context of Worker Three. Um, administering forms of personal care to Je- to Natalie. And you've uh heard Jennifer's evidence, read her statement. That she'd requested that personal care only be performed by females on a number of occasions dating back to when Natalie first came into the house. Um, now, self-evidently, that didn't occur. Um, what I'd like to first ask you about is the policies at um. Hmm, at the relevant times about um personal care. Um, now, those policies are set out in um your your statement. And you've divided it into uh policies before the introduction of the N D I S. Um, at paragraph two ninety-five and following the introduction of the N D I S at um paragraph two ninety-six. Um. Firstly, the policies before the um introduction of the N D I S. What is your understanding of the Life Without Barriers policies concerning personal care of female. Um, clients at that time? If a client and or their guardian asks that personal care of a female only be conducted by a female, what should have been done?
Uh, the policy stipulates that uh that clearly a conversation around. And a documentation of uh personal care in terms of how an individual wants their personal care to be uh undertaken. Uh, and uh those wishes then need to be uh followed.
Okay, so need to be followed.
Oh, absolutely, must be followed.
Um, what if a staff member of the preferred gender is not available? What are the policies um tell the tell the staff member to do in that situation?
Uh, so in regards to my understanding with Natalie, uh, it was the preferred. Uh, that female staff carried out personal care, uh, where. Uh, and that required two people, uh, and uh where two people were unable to, two female staff. Uh, one, the female staff led personal care whilst the male staff. Um, held in terms of, you know, stopping her from falling over and and the like. So on the case that uh there was two male staff rostered on. Um, then I can see through the documentation, um, that at the house level. A phone call was need to be made immediately to on-call and uh an additional staff member.
Okay, we're we're going to come to the particulars of this this scenario in in a moment. At the moment, I'm just loving, looking at the level of policy. So policy, as far as you're concerned, as a matter of policy. If a female client asks to only have personal care by a female staff member. It should only be conducted by a female staff member.
Yes.
Um, and rostering decisions. Are rostering decisions to ensure that that preference can be accommodated.
Yes.
So if a female client has asked that their personal care only be provided by a female. Then that means that, for example, females can only be rostered on the night shift.
If personal care.
Is required on the night shift?
Yes.
Okay, um. So I take it, um. That. You would agree that, well, I take it that you agree from your evidence. Uh, that um personal care preferences should must be taken into account in rostering decisions. And that where personal care preferences can't be accommodated, there should be an open and informed discussion about the client's preferred course of action. If the gender preference can't be accommodated.
Yes.
For example, if at a last minute um. Event, the male staff, a male put staff member has to come on um for emergency care overnight.
Yes.
Okay, um, and you would um also agree that where a client has been the subject of sexual misconduct. There is a heightened need to ensure that those gender preferences can be accommodated.
Yes.
Um, and do you accept that that, well firstly, um, you've already accepted that um. Personal care was in fact performed by males contrary to policy in the period. Leading up to um Worker Three's suspension.
Uh, yes.
Um, and in the period of time following Worker Three's suspension. You would also accept that um male staff members did perform personal care of Natalie?
Uh, to the degree, uh, I'm not sure, but yes, it appears that that is the case.
Okay, um, I'd like to put um a series of propositions to you. You can take it from me that there are documents to support each event. If you want to be taken to the document, let me know. But in order to save time, I'll just indicate what the documents record. First, Life Without Barriers Management um first was first informed about Worker Three in February two thousand and fifteen. Secondly, um Natalie's mother was informed about the indecent and sexual assault in August two thousand and fifteen.
So are you asking Mr. Dolly agree or are you just telling him?
I mean, I'm I'm putting a series of propositions and then I'm going to ask him a question about it.
All right.
Um. The. From the fifth of August two thousand and fifteen through to October two thousand and fifteen, this is after the um. Charges were laid, um, repeated promises were made. That um only a female staff member would engage in personal care. Do you accept that?
Yes.
Um. Then on the eighth of December two thousand and fifteen, an inter-staff email indicates um that. Females won't always be rostered on overnight shifts because no personal care was required on overnight shifts. Are you familiar with that email?
Uh, yes, I am familiar with the email.
Um, now, in relation to Natalie, who was a person who, a woman who suffered from incontinence. Um, do you agree that um it could not be said that personal care would not be required on an overnight shift?
Uh, in in relying on the the documents, it describes that personal care was not. Uh, required overnight um to to the specifics of the individual requirements. Uh, I I don't know those details.
Okay, you're not able to assist us with that. On the ninth of December two thousand and fifteen, Jennifer reiterated that she did not want males working without a female present. And said that she would take Natalie home any night that a female was not available. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am familiar with that.
Um, now, on the tenth of December two thousand and fifteen. Um, the disability program coordinator wrote to the Lismore staff. Assuring them that recent changes to the roster are only a temporary solution to facilitate Natalie's return to the group home. Are you familiar with that email? Um. And then on the sixteenth of December, an email between LWB staff indicates. That a male will be rostered on night duty. And the email states, confirming that the status quo remains, that we employ both male and female staff and work with both male and female residents. And as such, we roster males on night shifts. There's no indication that Natalie or any other female requires any personal care at night. The response says, we will not be giving Jennifer much notice unfortunately, but that can't be helped. Um, do you agree, are you familiar with that email?
Yes.
Do you agree that in circumstance? Do you agree that in circumstances where Jennifer has been promised. That there will be no males working without a female present and that she will take Natalie home any night that a female was not available? That to then tell the staff that recent rostering changes are only a temporary. Solution was inappropriate.
Sorry, was in.
Was inappropriate.
To to tell staff.
Tell staff that the rostering changes following the promise, the promise that there would be no. Um, no male staff rostered even at night, was it inappropriate?
Uh, uh, no, it was my understanding that. Um, from my reading of the documentation is that that was something that. Uh, from that request that uh management had implemented for a short period of time whilst they could review. Uh, the the request and and naturally, uh, within those changes, that would have. Resulted in staff asking questions in terms of the roster. And so from what I can see, that's. That's the the local management reassuring staff that that we're reviewing this process.
Can you, are you aware of any document that indicates to Jennifer? That contrary to the promises that were made to her, in fact, male staff would be rostered on overnight?
Uh, there is a, there is a point in which uh that conversation does take place, yes.
Okay, well, we might um get you to identify that document at a later point. Um. Then, on the, in June of two thousand and eighteen, an email indicates that males were being put on night shift. There were concerns about discriminating against male staff and that with staff shortages, there could be no guarantee. That there would be female staff. Um, can you, and again, are you aware of any documents at that time which indicate that Jennifer was told that. Um. That male staff would be rostered overnight?
I'd have to guess, sorry.
Um, then, in, now, I'll leave it at this, um. In August of twenty nineteen, Jennifer makes a complaint that Natalie is incontinent and was not being changed overnight. Are you aware of that email?
Yes.
Um, in view of that email, um, do you now accept that it. Was not appropriate to previously indicate that no personal care was required overnight?
That no personal care was required overnight? Uh. I I don't think there's any. Evidence that I've seen. That shows personal care being required overnight, no.
Well, for a woman who's.
Sorry, what does overnight mean? What's the shift?
Uh, I think it's, in this case, I think it's somewhere between twelve and six, twelve at night, six in the morning.
Twelve at night and six in the morning, six out.
Six AM, sorry.
Um. Perhaps if I just indicate one other email, which is um an action plan of September twenty nineteen. Which indicates that female staff must be on the night shift and that and Natalie shall be checked at O two thirty, O two thirty hours.
In twenty nineteen?
Yes.
Yes.
You're aware of that?
If you could take me to the document.
Okay, I can take you to that document. Um, it's uh tab sixty-two. Uh, no, sorry, wrong bundle, um. Which. Oh, yes, thank you, and it's, um. Hearing bundle A, tab fifty-four.
Take bullet points from the bottom.
Tab sixty-two.
It's actually six bullet points.
Yes. Yes, I can see that.
You can see that, and um and then you're aware that as of. May of twenty twenty. Uh, Jennifer was writing to Life Without Barriers indicating that that plan as approved was no longer working. And in July of twenty twenty, a complaint is made by Jennifer to the NDIS about Life Without Barriers having male carers on at night. Be aware of both of those matters?
Yes.
So would you agree that this undertaking that's made in September of two thousand and nineteen was not followed?
Uh. Uh, no, I can't agree to that that it wasn't followed. Um, and in order to, for for me to be able to make that assessment. Um. I it'd have to do a a almost a forensic review of the roster. Uh, in terms of who was rostered on over that that period of time. I mean, in the in the twenty nineteen document that we're talking about here. Uh, it stipulates female staff to do that, that awake overnight, so.
Yeah, um. So if there were occasions where male staff were the only staff members. Um, rostered on overnight, that would constitute a breach of that undertaking, but you're not in a position to tell us whether. You accept Jennifer's complaint that that was happening?
Uh. No, it's not that I don't accept Jennifer's complaint, uh, it's that in order for me to confirm. Uh, that if that took place, I'd I'd have to review that information.
So you're not in a position.
A granular roster, no.
Okay.
No.
But on the other hand, if we accepted the evidence given by Jennifer, that might be a pretty good starting point, mightn't it?
Yeah. Yes.
Um. You've uh heard that Natalie's mother was only informed of the indecent and sexual assault on August, in August twenty fifteen?
Yes, yes.
Um. Do you accept that there was no reason why she couldn't have been told about that earlier?
But absolutely, and in my opening accounts, I should have referenced that one.
Yeah, she should have been told earlier.
She should have been told earlier.
And staff members should also have been told earlier?
Sorry, staff members.
The other members of staff that weren't involved.
Told about.
Uh, told that a prosecution had been brought against one of the um, against Worker Three.
Once a charge, right? Yes.
Um, and that an internal investigation was occurring?
Whether the staff at the house should have been informed about an internal investigation? Uh. Possibly, possibly not where appropriate, yes.
Um, the other.
So the the document you were taking to a tab sixty-two, the action plan. Uh, if September two thousand and nineteen coincides, of course, with the time that you were, you held the position of uh. Director of Disability and Age Care New South Wales and ACT.
Yes.
What was the practice concerned generally, not just in relation to Natalie, but generally? In the group homes operated by Life Without Barriers, as far as care for. Female residents. Overnight, where those residents might have required personal care overnight?
Uh, in general, if, as you said, chair, personal care being required overnight. Uh, and uh that individual had requested that their personal care be done by females. Uh, female staff, then that should take place, yes, that is the general practice.
But did it? And do you know more accurately, perhaps more precisely, do you know whether that practice was in fact followed?
Uh, well, to the point that I can say in some of the developments of our system, particularly around our rostering system. Um, we'll now be able to determine the need of client individual and or requests. Uh, and that will then match, and so in this case, if it was personal care delivered by an awake overnight. And a, that particular client's request that it would be female. Then that can be in our system in terms of when that staff is rostered, if that's a male staff, that will flag as an issue.
I think you had the word now in there at one point. Do you mean that is the position in December two thousand and twenty-one under your new system?
Uh, yes.
But what was the position in two thousand and nineteen, let us say in September?
A rostering chair was done and uh locally.
Look, so you you wouldn't, you wouldn't know as to whether the practice was in fact followed locally?
No, I would not.
No, you would.
Okay.
Just before I move off this issue, could I ask you to turn to tab sixty? And that is, um. Hearing bundle C, tab one hundred and one. Uh, this is an email from the Lifestyle Supports Coordinator. And it um is an email, it's. The email that I referred to as being sent on the twenty-fifth of June twenty eighteen. And the first concerns concerns about rostering. Um, it follows a. Um, email chain where.
Where do we find this in our documents?
Uh, tab sixty.
Tab sixty?
Six zero.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and.
The one that starts, I was off most last week, six.
Yes, yes, and so this is in the context of an email exchange expressing concerns about um rostering. Um, and the first dot point in this is. We cannot discriminate against our male staff. Um, this is in the context of concerns being expressed about. Female staff being the only staff members who'll get the overnight shift. Do you have any comments about discrimination of male staff in the context of. Uh, rostering decisions about accommodating gender preference?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
You don't have any comments, so that's entirely inappropriate?
Sorry, which inappropriate?
So what appears to be said here is that they can't accommodate having females rostered on. Over the night shift only because they cannot discriminate against the male staff. So the male staff have to have equal opportunity to have the night shift as the female staff get.
Yeah, I I mean, in terms of the word discriminate of male staff, uh, comment on uh whether remote. Rem, amounts to discrimination or not, that's that's not.
Do you agree that if a female client has asked for. Female care, then they should get a female carer regardless of whether or not a male carer would rather have that shift?
Uh, yes, I think I've said that, yes.
Um. Do you agree that while the policies, um. Tell us that conversations have to happen about the personal care of female clients. Those policies don't expressly say that the preferred view. Has to be acted on and has to be taken into account in rostering decisions?
No, it's my view that the policy says that through that consultation. Of how personal care is to be provided for either female clients or male clients. Um, then based on that, the following had occurred. In terms of the wishes in which they they wanted their personal care to be, to be taken care of, yes, so.
Um, but do you agree that none of the policies expressly states that. Actioning those preferences will require consideration of rostering?
Uh, it's my view that the policy says, as I've said before. That the stipulation of how you want your personal care to be delivered. Agree? That should then be delivered that way.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, no, sorry, I don't think it's an interpretation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'll turn now to the um issue of bowel care and the response to bowel care. Um, now, you've heard in Jennifer's evidence that Natalie was hospitalized with a bowel obstruction on the ninth of March twenty twenty?
Yes.
Um, that incident was not treated as a reportable incident?
By LWB?
By LWB.
No.
Um, to your knowledge, was any internal review or investigation conducted to determine. Whether or not Life Without Barriers could have taken action to prevent that obstruction?
Uh, no internal review, no.
Did that, did that incident ever come to your attention while you held the position prior to the one you now hold?
Uh, no, it did not, yeah.
It's never came to you?
No.
Should, should it have?
Yes.
Why didn't it?
Uh, it's the the incident itself in terms of the the hospitalisation. Um, there was, uh, from what I can glean, uh, no record of an incident report. Uh, put into the system uh of that taking place. Uh, and therefore, had that have been put into the system as per our policy, that would have flagged to me immediately.
When did you find out about this incident?
Uh, through my re, through review of this material.
This is the first you've heard about it in preparation for this hearing. Have you done anything about uh what happened or what didn't happen?
Uh, I've I've reviewed the the relevant material. Um, I can see uh that there is uh. Missing documentation in terms of bowel management charts. Um, and and I can certainly see in the organisation work underway. Um, uh, to working with uh and streamlining that process to ensure that took place, yes. Yeah.
Um, I I did wish to ask Mr. Dolly about what that work was, but I'm told that the stenographer needs a very short break. Um, I've only got about ten minutes left to go, so we can probably have the short break and give and finish by four, um, or.
A ten-minute break will take us to five to four.
Or a five-minute break would take us to ten to four.
Let's make it a seven-minute break to ten to four.
Thank you, cheers.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Commission is resumed.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Baker, but I should say that break was very well earned by those responsible for the real-time transcript. They do an extraordinary job. We need to be probably a bit more careful about ensuring we don't exhaust them. It's a very difficult task.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Dolly, uh, just before the break, you were telling us that your review um of the issue of bowel care was. Um, that you've identified that there were a number of missing documents?
Yes.
Um, a number of missing bowel charts. In fact, the only bowel chart that was recorded was for, I think it was the nine days prior to hospitalisation?
Sorry, data hospitalisation was?
Uh, the ninth of March. So the bowel charts go from the first of March to the ninth of March.
Uh, and I've seen bowel charts in April.
Following the, following the incident, but from December till the first of March, no bowel charts at all.
Not from my concern.
Okay, and um during that period, um, no fluid charts after the thirty-first of January.
I believe so.
Um, and you would agree that that is um a clear deficiency, given Natalie's health needs?
Uh, bowel charts absolutely should be filled out for for anybody that requires that, yes.
Yeah, um, because they can be quite critical to ensuring their health.
Oh, they just need to be, yeah, they need to be done.
And you said that there was some um work underway in ensuring that there would be compliance with bowel charts. And fluid charts and the life in the future. Can you tell us what that is?
Uh, so, um. One of the difficulties uh we we find often is that uh with the documentation in the. Busyness of a uh what is a group home, particularly when you've got four or five individuals and there are a number of staff. Um, that uh things like bowel charts, as as in this case, are one of those things that uh tend to, uh, could could be missed. Um, and so there is significant work in the organisation around digitising that process to streamline it so that. Uh, not only is that documentation uh no longer paper-based. Um, it's much more efficient for staff to to be able to log that, and secondly, uh, gives much more oversight in terms of governance arrangements. Um, for uh management staff to to view and review uh the adherence to um. Bowel management as such, um, without having to go through individual documentation, uh, paper-based at a house level, yes.
Um, and in relation to her visit to the, Natalie's visit to the GP on the fifth of March twenty twenty. You able to say whether um it was an LWB staff member who took her to the GP or whether it was a. A person, support worker from another um agency?
I believe it was an LWB staff.
Okay, have you seen any records of that GP visit in the LWB documentation?
There's, there's certainly a record that references uh an increase in mobile call from the GP appointment, yes.
From the, in the, in the GP documents or in the LWB documents?
Uh, I couldn't determine whether.
We might ask you to follow that up as well, um. And just to be clear, I think you were asked some questions by the chair about um your lack of awareness of this hospitalization in March of two thousand and twenty. Um, is this something that should have had an internal review or an investigation conducted after a hospitalization um to determine whether there was anything that could have been done by Natalie to uh by Life Without Barriers to um prevent um the situation that unfolded?
Uh, yeah, had this have uh been flagged in the incident report system as as we've talked about, uh, that would flag to our National Safeguarding Unit uh who reviews that, uh, and then based on, you know, relevant information, um, you know, uh, and possibly uh subsequent information being presented to the NDIS Commission, uh, there could be subsequent reviews of that, yes.
So, so at the time, it should have been flagged as something that required consideration at high levels?
Uh, yes, yes.
And certainly by the time that Jennifer made a complaint on twenty-one May, two thousand and twenty, there should definitely have been consideration given to whether this was a reportable incident at that time?
Uh, yes, but I also believe uh that complaint uh was reviewed by the uh commission themselves, yes.
Um, but I I guess the point is, it shouldn't have been necessary for Jennifer to make the complaint at that point, it should have been reviewed before that.
No, 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 it should have been reviewed, but it was subsequently reviewed, yes.
Um. Then, just finally, in relation to financial management and communication, um, at the outset of your evidence, you um gave some evidence about uh Natalie and the question of finance and communication, can you just um with specificity indicate the shortcomings and deficiencies that you've identified in that respect?
Uh, in that uh there appears to be um information where Natalie's mother uh wanted some information around uh the spending, and that was in regards, from what I understand, to be um some receipts uh being provided for uh some of Natalie's discretionary funds, uh that was allocated by her mum to her. Um, from my review, I can see a significant amount of receipts um provided in that process. Um, and then there was a small occasion over uh the the kind of the relevant period of ten years where uh Natalie's mother had to ask for receipts and, you know, and subsequently, I believe they were provided. My thing is that we should not have to ask for them.
Okay. Um, in terms of budgeting, um, you're aware that in October two thousand and fifteen, Natalie asked for assistance for budget planning?
Yes.
Um, and uh the Life Without Barriers documents, we've only been able to find two budgets, one from two thousand and seventeen and one from two thousand and twenty. Are you aware of any budgets prepared by Life Without Barriers other than those two?
Uh, and no, and the reason for that is that uh for a large period of time in the early instance, the New South Wales trustee managed uh Natalie's financials, uh and it's the person who's got the responsibility of managing the financials that prepares the budget. And so in that case, uh, the trustee is the one that prepares the budget and allocation of that, uh, and then the facilitation of that.
I should be more precise, um. In the period of time while the trustee and guardian had responsibility for management of the estate, um Natalie had discretionary spending of two, a two hundred dollar allowance, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Um, I think that was per month, per fortnight, um. So in in terms of the budget, the trustee and guardian had budgeted this much for rent, this much for board, this much for activities, two hundred dollars per fortnight as an allowance. Um, during that time, Life Without Barriers effectively managed Natalie's discretionary budget uh spending and that that two hundred dollars was sent to Life Without Barriers to assist Natalie?
Uh, no, we did not manage the discretionary of Natalie, sorry.
Um, the the two, do you agree that in circumstances when in October two thousand and fifteen Natalie had asked for assistance with budget planning, that it would have been appropriate for Life Without Barriers to assist Natalie in preparing a budget for the spending of that two hundred dollar allowance?
Uh, potentially, but given that, uh, I I think I was still at that case, the trustee managed uh the financials and the discretionary spend spending, that would have been set out in uh in in that lot.
So in terms, are you saying, is your evidence that it was up to the trustee to make decisions about Natalie's going to spend this amount of money on saving up for Christmas presents, this amount of money on um a treat down the local shops that day, is that, i- is your evidence that the trustee and guardian over that period was responsible for making those decisions?
And not making those decisions.
Well, assisting Natalie to make those decisions.
Natalie in terms of the discretionary funds, yes. Um, there there's certainly, and I, what I will also say is that there was a role uh or could have been a role for for staff in Life Without Barriers to to make sure that um to the budget, uh, that that may have been uh adhered to, yes.
Are you aware of any document that suggests that the trustee and guardian did undertake that form of budget planning of the discretionary spend during that period?
Uh, no, I'm not aware.
Mr. Dolly wouldn't buy that.
Um. Um, from two thousand and seventeen, or in two thousand and seventeen, Life Without Barriers does prepare a budget with Jennifer and Natalie?
Yes.
Um, do you agree that it would have been preferable to review that budget before two thousand and twenty?
Oh. Sorry, uh, and again, I think here is that we don't manage the funds again at that stage, that's that's Natalie's mother.
So you haven't, you, your evidence is Life Without Barriers has nothing to do with supporting Jennifer in making decisions about how to spend her discretionary funds?
No, that's not, not what I'm saying, uh, the the question was put to me is, are we responsible for uh preparing and managing those funds?
Okay, well, instead of responsible, is that something that Life Without Barriers could and should have facilitated? Jennifer and Natalie making a budget to assist Natalie in making decisions about her discretionary spending?
Oh, yes, we could have, yes.
And should have?
We could have.
Um. Commissioners, unless, well, I'm not sure if you will have some questions?
Thank you, um, I'll ask Commissioner Galbally whether you have any questions to put to Mr. Dolly?
Um, no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeown?
Uh, I'm the same, no, thank you.
No questions, all right, um. You remember that I raised an issue concerning uh the notification to insurers that uh was uh, that is referred to a paragraph two hundred and ninety-two of your statement? When I go to paragraphs one hundred and fifty-four to one hundred and sixty-four, I can see the allegations that were made against the two staff members that were upheld. The inference I would draw would be, uh, and I'm not going to ask you to comment, Ms. Robbs may wish to say something about this, that the notification to an insurer was because of possible liability incurred by Life Without Barriers because of the failures of those two staff members, those failures being established in the inquiry that took place. My question to you is, do you know whether any apology has ever been given to Natalie about the events that occurred or any compensation offered to Natalie by Life Without Barrier?
Uh, thank you, Chair, um, I know that, uh, and it was one of
Not what might happen, I'm asking you what has happened.
Yeah, so a an apology has not been offered uh up until this stage, uh, and uh I know that a apology will be offered.
I didn't ask you that. We'll find out what will happen a little later, my question was, has an apology been offered to Natalie, the answer up to date is not.
Is not.
And has compensation ever been offered to Natalie?
Uh, no, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Mitchamore, do you wish to ask Mr. Dolly any questions?
No, I don't, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, I'll assume that no other legal representative wishes to ask Mr. Dolly any questions unless somebody says something within the next couple of seconds. In the absence of something being said, that concludes Mr. Dolly's evidence, thank you, Mr. Dolly, for coming to the commission to give evidence and for the statements that you have provided. Uh, we will resume, I take it, tomorrow at ten AM, and tomorrow we will hear from, as I understand it, from Ms. Robbs. All right, thank you very much, we'll now adjourn until ten AM tomorrow.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.